Morning session of the Portland City Council now in order. Sue, please call the roll.
Saul Spahn.
Here.
Udaly.
Here.
Fritz.
Fish.
Here.
Wheeler.
Here. And colleagues, Commissioner Fritz is excused today. She is out of town on city business. She's attending the League of Oregon Cities on behalf of the city of Portland, and she is our designee there. So I just wanted to make sure people understood that that is for reason for not being here today. Good morning.
Good morning. Welcome to the Portland City Council. The City Council represents all Portlanders and meets to do the city's business. This presiding officer preserves order and decorum during City Council meetings so everyone can feel welcome, comfortable, respected, and safe. To participate in council meetings, you may sign up in advance with the Council Clerk's office for communications to briefly-
I'm sorry, could you speak a little more loudly? There's some people having troubles hearing. And maybe could we turn up the mics a little bit?
We've got hit the ears.
Sure. How's this?
Thank you.
To participate in council meetings, you may sign up in advance with the Council Clerk's office for communications to briefly speak about any subject. You may also sign up for public testimony on resolutions or the first readings of ordinances. Your testimony should address the matter being considered at the time. When testifying, please state your name for the record. Your address is not necessary. Please disclose if you are a lobbyist. If you are representing an organization, please identify it. The presiding officer determines the length of testimony. Individuals generally have three minutes to testify unless otherwise stated. When you have 30 seconds left, a yellow light goes on. When your time is done, a red light goes on. If you are in the audience and would like to show your support for something that is said, please feel free to do a thumbs up. If you want to express that you do not support something, please feel free to do a thumbs down. Disruptive conduct such as shouting or interrupting testimony or council deliberations will not be allowed. If there are disruptions, a warning will be given that further disruption may result in a person being ejected for the remainder of the meeting. After being ejected, a person who fails to leave the meeting is subject to arrest for trespass. Thank you for helping your fellow Portlanders feel welcome, comfortable, respected, and safe.
Thank you very much. Sue, my understanding is the first three individuals for communication would potentially like to come up together. Is that correct?
Correct.
Very good. Why don't you call the first three people, please?
Item 1000, Request of Angie Jenkins to Address Council Regarding Crime and Advocacy in Park Rose in Portland. 1001, Request of William Keller to Address Council Regarding Crime and Advocacy in Park Rose in Portland. And 1002 is Request of Kathy Morris to Address Council Regarding the Same. Please come up.
Welcome, and thank you for being here. You have three minutes, and if you could just state your name for the record, please.
Good morning.
To be clear, are we going to have three minutes individually?
Yeah, three minutes each.
Correct.
Yeah.
Hi, I'm Angie Jenkins with Hooks at Automotive and Tires, president of Park Rose Business Association. Am I starting individually? Okay. So I am here to essentially beg for assistance. I have been to several different organizations, every single PSAC meeting, the Business Association meetings, the minus bank, several other organizations. We are in desperate need of your assistance. The cities, or the citizens of Portland are, we're dying. We are drowning in crime. We're drowning in lack of support. Businesses are now getting taxed more on their trash bills to pay for litter cleanup from the homeless camps. Nobody's signed up for this. I want you just to simply address behavior. If somebody is doing crime, enforce the laws. If somebody is hungry, feed them. But we have got to start addressing behaviors. Otherwise, things are not going to change. When I moved here from Oregon, or from Idaho, I chose Portland over Seattle. I came here and I spent eight hours walking around downtown, and I watched a guy drop something on the ground. A perfect stranger chased him a half a mile, or half a block, to give it back. I walk around downtown now, I'm stepping around hypodermic needles. I'm hearing from my business members that they are actively trying to get people to stop defecating on their patios. This is a Burgerville. That takes a whole, totally different mean to having a burger with your kids. They're actively saying, please use the restroom inside, and they fail. And there's no support. So I go to these PSAC meetings, and I hear from the officers, our hands are tied. I'm hearing from the park rangers, our hands are tied. Certain laws are not being enforced, and we need to come to City Council. I'm also hearing that the City Council has no idea what Portland is going through. So I encourage you all to come to Park Rose, walk downtown, and is this the city that you want to be remembered for? This is not the city I moved into 15 years ago. And I will be taking it back, and I'm asking for your help. Thank you.
Thank you. Could I ask you a couple of follow-up questions?
Sure.
And just so you know, this is an issue that I approach with urgency. It's one that I understand is a very complex issue. I have walked around Park Rose, and I am familiar with the issues around homelessness, camping, trash, litter, needles, defecation, and graffiti.
Mm-hmm.
I have now been here for about 22 months.
I'm sorry, were you going to say you've been here where?
Mayor, for about 22 months. And during that time, I have fought very, very hard to increase public safety, park rangers, police officers. I just announced a trash collection initiative that I will be working with business districts and the neighborhood associations and volunteer organizations like Solve on. We have significantly increased funding for homelessness prevention, for shelter, for services. We have been very aggressive in terms of, as a council, around supportive housing to get people who really are vulnerable, people with mental health issues, people with addiction issues, off the streets. So we're working very, very hard, but it's not going to be quick. In the near term, what specifically do you need to see from us? Because we're all in agreement. I mean, I went out to breakfast before this, and this is what I heard about. I'll have five other meetings over the course of the day, and this will be the issue. Is your, I'll go to an event tonight, and this will be the issue that's talked about. I'm on a radio show on Sunday where I'm told for two hours, people are going to yell at me about the homeless crisis. So the question I always have is, what should we be doing that we are not doing with the resources, the finite resources we have? What is it you need from us specifically?
I need you to enforce the laws.
Okay, so here-
And I need you to address behaviors. So if somebody has mental health issues, there's resources for them. But if they're, how in the world can I take a video of a drug deal of heroin going down? I call the officers, and they say, oh, that's just a little bit of heroin.
Okay, well, first of all-
That's not okay.
Let me address that issue. Using or dealing heroin is against the law, and I want you to hear it from me in an open council chamber. If a police officer or a firefighter ever tells you that I tied their hands, they are not telling you the truth. And so if any, and I said this the other day in a different neighborhood association meeting, if an officer ever tells you that, get their name.
Okay.
Get their name. I want to know. And I'm just saying this in front of the whole world. The laws will be enforced, and I'm directing that they be enforced, and I've made it very clear that the laws will be enforced while I'm the police commissioner. So if somebody says, oh, no, the mayor's tied our hands, or the City Council has tied our hands, or somebody has told us we cannot enforce the law, it just flat out isn't true. And so I want to nip that rumor right at the bud right now. So if you hear that again, please let me know.
Okay.
So I am sympathetic. I'd be happy to continue this conversation with you about Park Rose. We're in agreement.
Perfect.
In terms of the problem, we may not be exactly on the same page in terms of how the resources are allocated or what the finite nature of the resources are, but we've got a budget coming up again, and I'd love to get your help for the kinds of things you just described.
Perfect. Thank you.
And I appreciate your being here very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, City Council. I'm actually not Kathy Morris. I am Annette Stanhope, Chair of the Park Rose Neighborhood Association. Kathy could not be with us this morning, and I'm glad and grateful that you allowed me to speak this morning. And while I'm not officially representing the neighborhood association this morning, I'm familiar with the concerns and issues that face our neighborhood and issues that have been expressed by the Park Rose Business Association. Crime and safety is one of the more popular topics in our neighborhood, and I hear many accounts of how residents feel disappointed and angry and how things are handled or aren't handled by the police bureau. Many realize that their frustrations stem from short staffing in the police bureau, so I'm speaking today to ask you to prioritize staff increases in the bureau. My understanding, based on information from the Public Safety Action Committee, or the PSAC meetings, is that we have 100 fewer officers than 20 years ago, but nearly 300,000 more residents. This combined with the large size of our precincts and the amount of ground that officers have to cover is spreading our place too thin. And one anecdote that illustrates this, and this is just one story of many that I've heard, but I only have three minutes this morning. One Park Rose neighbor called police after a man came to her door, tried to force his way in. She managed to push him outside, but had to wait 15 minutes anxiously while the man lurked on the premises. When the officer finally arrived, he was brusque, dismissive, and did not offer to take a police report. And while she was frustrated with this interaction, and rightly so, she also observed that he looked completely exhausted and overworked. And this is coming from an ER nurse, so she knows what she's talking about. Mayor and City Council, we need to staff our police bureau to levels where they can do their jobs competently and confidently. Not only this, but if we have enough officers, they can take the time to do community policing, walk beats, and build relationships with those in communities, something I hear residents would like to see. When they're able to build relationships in community, they know more about the people living there, they feel vested in the community, and have more success in their work. And I've seen examples of the success when police have been able to work closely with neighbors to secure vacant homes that have been the source of chronic criminal activity. So I'm sure you've heard this request before, but I'm merely adding our emphasis for the need for better police staffing. Thanks for listening.
Thank you. Appreciate it very much. Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor Wheeler and Commissioners. My name is William Keller. I'm a CPA, and I have my own practice in Park Rose. I'm also the treasurer of the Park Rose Business Association. And I'm here to obviously talk about security and theft and whatnot as well on that, but my focus is more of how, ways that I see with my clients and investors of how to improve housing for low-income. The rules right now have made it really tough for landlords to want to invite or welcome in new or low-income tenants. I have, in my own experience, five years ago, my neighbor passed away. She had a son who was from Alaska and had no job down here. She lost her house because it was a, had a reverse mortgage, and her property taxes were deferred, so the bank, what was owed to the bank and owed for property taxes was more than the house. He could not stay in that house, had no place to go. I offered him one year to stay at my house, to get familiar with the area, and try to find a job. It took four years before he found he moved out. I had no, I eventually had to evict him. It was the only way I could get him to leave. But it took a long process for that to happen. And that's even gotten worse now that you need, it's now a 90-day no cause eviction. I would love to be able to help out. I can afford my house by myself. I would love to be able to help out someone, come and say, hey, you can live with me for 30 days or 60 days to get on your feet. Problem is, is that if they don't, I have another 60 days or 90 days have to go by to be able to get them out. I was burned out after him being there for four years. It was, it's a, it takes a mental toll on me. It made it now that I actually don't even want to have a tenant. My next, hopefully, if I have a roommate, will be my spouse. So that's where it is. In terms of investors, in the ones that I've seen with my clients, they're no longer making decisions based on the finances of having residential rental properties. Their issue now is the time it takes to be a landlord. They can't, they can't, trying to, best way to phrase this, they can no longer, it's harder for them to determine how they want to have their residence, their tenants. It's just that they don't, they're coming to me to discuss the legal issues of being a landlord now, not how to, the finances of being an investor. And that's been the biggest issue that I'm finding, and most of them now, I'm advising them to have talked to a lawyer before they become a landlord. And most people that I said they're trying to, that's their investment, is their residential rental properties. So that's why I have to say, I appreciate how to help that out.
Yeah, thanks for your perspective. I think Commissioner Fish had a comment.
Yeah, I have a question. First of all, we're very appreciative that you took the time to use the communication slot to come in and testify. Is this the first time each of you has been before council?
No.
So-
For me, it is.
Angie?
I've been before.
You've been before on other matters? Is this the first time you've used a communication spot?
No.
Okay. And you're not Kathy, but you're Kathy's, you're the head of the Neighborhood Association. Is this your first time?
I was along with somebody else once, but this is my first time just testifying on my own.
And Mr. Keller?
This is my first time.
So we have a small number of people that talk to us a lot during communications. It's their right. They sign up every time there's a slot. And it's often struck me that, as a result, we don't hear from lots of other people. We hear from a small number of people all the time, which is their right, but there's lots of people we don't hear from. And, you know, this has been probably a 10-minute or more period at the beginning of council where you have our complete attention. And one of the things that Angie said, and probably the only thing I would disagree with that was part of her remarks, is she said that the impression she has is that we either, as a council, don't spend time on Park Rose or don't care. And that could, that could, nothing could be farther from the truth. Park Rose is like lots of other communities and neighborhoods within Portland. There are similarities in terms of what we're, what you're experiencing. But one of the things the mayor didn't mention, for example, is we put ongoing money into the catalytic investment initiative to help the Park Rose Business Association and District prosper. And we now have a staff person who's working on that.
We might want to have a separate conversation about that.
Fine, happy to. I was at a Park Rose High School recently, and we kicked off the first Governor Roberts inaugural scholarship, and we awarded it to a young woman of color who was very, very promising. I was at the American Cancer Society fundraiser the other day, and I spoke, which was in Park Rose. So I just want you to know, we care deeply. The mayor has given you a sense of the things that under his administration he's tried to do. You're challenging us to do better and more, but I want to just go back to what I said at the beginning. Thank you for taking the time to come out in communications and share your views.
Thank you.
We need to hear from more people on a broader range of issues than we do, and it is, from your point of view, I think, time well spent because you have our complete attention. So thank you.
Thank you.
I want to put in a thanks as well. I have no reason to doubt at all the passion that you've brought to this issue and the importance of the issue, and I want to be very, very clear about that. This council did make a principled stand around increasing police officers during the budget this year. We ultimately got about 58. It was a very controversial decision, as you're well aware, and I agree with you on the staffing. I was just down in San Francisco talking to the mayor there, talking about homeless issues, talking about livability issues, which loom large in San Francisco, as well as here in Portland, and up in Seattle with Mayor Durkin. They have over twice as many police officers as we have here in the city of Portland, but their population is only about a third larger. And if you go to a city like New York where they have 28,000 police officers, you start to realize that at some point, you're asking for too much from too small of a group of people, particularly given that we have a lot of mental health and addiction issues on our streets. And police officers are forced into that first responder position. And we all agree, you know, Daryl Turner, I, the city, the county, we all agree that that's not the right first line of defense. We want the police enforcing the law, and we want to find ways to have more interactions with social service providers to provide those other services. And I view the business districts as really important allies in helping us to move in that direction. So I'm hoping that you'll bring that passion and maybe some of your colleagues into the budget process as we get down to the brass tacks of the budget decisions next year, because I predict, again, as we did this year, we're going to hear from hundreds of people who will tell us not to increase police at all. And we'll hear from very, very few people who will say what you just said, which is, we need more cops, so that we can get back to the community policing, which is my top priority. We've got to get back to that community policing model because it reduces crime and it increases trust between the community and the police who serve the community. So I'm appreciative of much of what I've heard here today.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Next individual, please. Oh, Carla, welcome back.
Hi, thank you.
Wendy, I had some written ones. Where do I put these?
Oh, yeah, just give it to Carla, and she'll hand it over to us. Thank you for bringing it.
Item 1003, Request of Merrily Day to Address Council Regarding Costa Rica Delegates from Partners of America.
Very good. Welcome.
Thank you for being here.
Oh, yes. Thank you very much. I'm Merrily Day, and I want to introduce Carlos, who's a lawyer from Costa Rica, and we are part of the Partners of America. It was started 50 years ago by Kennedy to improve our relationships, kind of on the grassroots, kind of like people-to-people. So we go down to Costa Rica for about a month, a year, and stay with different people in different areas, and they come up here, and they're in Portland this week. And I'm going to turn this over to Carlos.
Great, thank you.
Good morning, Mayor of the city of Portland.
Good morning.
Good morning, council members of the city. I am Carlos Jimenez del Corre from Costa Rica, and I'm here in my group as a program who is an adult cultural interchange of the Partners of the Americas. And you also know that Oregon and Costa Rica are city, two sisters states. I want to say something. I'm really concerned about the global warming, and Costa Rica hopes to be carbon neutral by the year 2021. It is coming by incorporating most renewable resources in order to produce energy. And also, we will be probably the first country in the world to get the carbon neutral. I appreciate too much your attention. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Who did I bring with you today?
What?
Who did you bring with you today?
Oh, well, I brought the rest of the delegation from Costa Rica.
Could you please stand?
Yeah.
Thank you. We'll suspend the rules.
They are teachers and microbiologists and- They are teachers and microbiologists and nurses and doctors, and, and we go down there, and we're the same kind of regular people, and get to know them and, and get to learn about what they're doing in Costa Rica, which is, I really invite you to come to Costa Rica. You will be amazed. It's very much like Oregon, but moving faster in the area of being carbon neutral and saving their biodiversity.
Well, thank you, and, and we're very inspired by the work that you're doing in Costa Rica. I was just in San Francisco representing the city of Portland at the Global Climate Action Summit, and there are cities from all over the world that are taking your leadership as an example of a community that can make real progress on reducing carbon emissions. And we too are proud of the work that we've done here in the city of Portland. As a nation, we have a long way to go in the United States.
And not much time.
And not much time. And so it's really important that nations like Costa Rica have taken this leadership role to show the rest of the world how to do it. And we appreciate you being here to share that message with all of us here. We thank you, and we thank your delegation for being here. We're honored by your presence. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Very good. Do we have time for a photo with the delegation?
Oh, sure.
Why don't we just come right down in front, and colleagues will take a quick photo with the delegation? Carla, which items have been pulled off the consent agenda?
Pardon?
Which items have been pulled?
1009.
1009, please call the roll on the remainder of the consent.
Saltzman?
Aye.
You Daly?
Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye, the consent agenda is adopted.
Mayor, Mayor Wheeler?
Commissioner Fish?
Just as you're going through and managing the agenda, can I just point out that because I have an excused absence around 11:00, you might decide after the time certance to move a couple of things up that have us, that are emergency, just so that if you want to get them passed or shift them to, or take out the emergency clause, but I'll be leaving at 11:00.
All right, thanks, thanks for the heads up, and I'll take a look at that. Let's go with 1004, please.
Appoint inaugural members to the Portland Committee on Community Engaged Policing for staggered term set to expire June 30, 2019 for youth members, September 26, 2019 and September 26, 2020.
Colleagues, I'm particularly excited about the first item on our agenda today. During the past two months, I've been incredibly energized by the progress of the Portland Committee on Community Engaged Policing, otherwise known as PSEP. We've come an incredibly long way, and I'm proud to bring these appointments before my colleagues, and have the inaugural members of the PSEP here today to introduce themselves to the community. Nicole Grant from my office is here to present this item and introduce the 13 new PSEP members. Good morning, Nicole.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Nicole Grant, Senior Policy Advisor to Mayor Wheeler. I'm here today for the appointments of the 13 inaugural members of the PCCEP, the Portland Committee on Community Engaged Policing. Of the 106 applications we received, the mayor has chosen to appoint the following outstanding individuals to the PSEP. Sebastian Chevalier, a youth member, Yolanda Clay, Lakiana Drury, Lakeisha Dumas, Robert Die, Sharon Gary Smith, Aden Hassan, Andrew Calick, Michelle Lang, Patrick Nolan, Sam Sacks, Zachary Thornhill, and Kalangi Williams, a youth member. Prior to introducing you formally to these members, I'd like to provide a brief overview of the selection process for the record. So earlier this year, the Selection Advisory Committee comprised of five council appointees from the Portland community was formed to develop the written application and selection criteria and assess the candidates. Outside of the development of the written application, neither the mayor's office nor council offices were involved in any part of the Selection Advisory Committee's selection process. Discussion around who to interview and final recommendations to the mayor were the sole responsibility of the Selection Advisory Committee. When reviewing written applications and interviewing candidates, the Selection Advisory Committee focused on the following--
Mr. Walsh, this is a, this is an interruption in violation of council rules.
We will shut you down.
We'll take a two-minute recess.
Outside of the written application, neither the mayor's office nor council offices were involved in any part of the Selection Advisory Committee's selection process. Discussion around who to interview and final recommendations to the mayor were the sole responsibility of the Selection Advisory Committee. When reviewing written applications and interviewing candidates, the Selection Advisory Committee focused on the following areas when assessing applicants. Lived experience as a member of a marginalized community, lived experience with mental or physical health issues, interpersonal skills, experience working with or advocating for marginalized communities, and experience utilizing social services and engaging in government processes. The Selection Advisory Committee provided its recommendations to the mayor, listing the candidates they believed should be on the PSEP along with alternates. The mayor's office consulted with commissioner offices before the mayoral interviews and met with the Selection Advisory Committee and council offices on Thursday, September 6, 2018, to discuss the candidates. In addition to the mayor, of course, each mayoral interview was attended by Nicole Grant, myself, Jared Hager from the U.S. Attorney's Office, a PSEP facilitator, and at least one member of the Selection Advisory Committee. Mayoral interviews with adult candidates were conducted on August 23rd and 24th and 28th. They were 15 minutes each in length. Mayoral group interviews with youth were conducted on August 29th and 30th. The mayor made his final decision on Friday, September 7. Mayoral staff made a personal phone call to Dr. Leroy Haynes of the AMAC, notifying him of the appointments on Monday, September 10. The city attorney's office then sent a written list of the appointments to the AMAC attorneys for distribution to membership. You know, as the mayor has said in various setting, he suffered from an embarrassment of riches in the candidates recommended by the Selection Advisory Committee. In a process fraught with skepticism by many members of the public, we were heartened to see such a high level of interest in the PSEP, and then to meet with such stellar individuals during the interview phase of the selection process. We are aware and want to be mindful of concerns around the diversity of the board. Every effort was made to balance gender and racial diversity with lived experience. The Selection Advisory Committee also took into consideration a candidate's professional background, to the extent mental health advocacy or social justice work were involved. For anyone interested, we have published on the mayor's website, under Public Records, the demographic breakdown of PSEP applicants. We have also included a full description of the selection process, along with descriptions of the mayoral, adult, and youth interview structures. Individual demographic information about the candidates was not disclosed to the Selection Advisory Committee during the selection process. The mayor has also selected four adult alternates and two youth alternates, who are welcome to attend all PSEP meetings and the orientation. This Friday actually marks the first day of a succession orientation or retreat for PSEP members. Though the agenda is still being finalized, the orientation will include a training on institutional racism, the history of the settlement agreement offered by the AMAC and Mental Health Association, PSEP member responsibilities as public officials offered by the city attorney's office, a co-op panel discussion, and a PPP panel discussion. PSEP members will have an opportunity to debrief, brainstorm, and work with facilitators on their work plan for the year. During these successions, PSEP members will also have an opportunity to participate in the PPP's Community Academy and a ride-along. So outside of the formal application process to serve on the committee, there will be additional opportunities for interested Portlanders to engage the PSEP and participate in this process. So I encourage folks to get involved in the subcommittees that will be formed, participate in the quarterly community gatherings, and also engage PSEP through civic life, district coalitions, the Coalition of Communities of Color, the Portland Commission on Disabilities, the Human Rights Commission, and the New Portlander Policy Commission, all entities that PSEP is required to consult per the PSEP plan. Commissioners, at this time, I'd like to give you the opportunity to hear directly from several PSEP members. Due to work and scheduling conflicts, a few were unable to attend this morning. They are Yolanda Clay, Sharon Gary Smith, Aden Hassan, Michelle Lang, Patrick Nolan, and Zachary Thornhill. So I'll briefly kind of work through their biographies, and then I'll invite the PSEP members who are present to the table. Yolanda Clay became empowered to vocalize and advocate for individuals with mental health issues by completing peer support specialist training. She has gained knowledge about the social effects of poverty, and in particular generational poverty, on individuals and families by participating in the Communication Across Barriers Poverty Institute Conference. A self-described introvert, Yolanda believes in the power of empathy versus easing societal ills. Sharon Gary Smith. For five decades, Sharon has been a grassroots activist, agitator, and organizer for educational equity, community economic development, and racial and social justice. She's held positions in corporate America, community-based organizations, and national and local philanthropy. Most recently, she served as the Executive Director of the MRG Foundation, Oregon's leading racial, social, environmental, and economic justice funder. Sharon also co-chairs Metro's Committee on Racial Equity, CORE, that is responsible for review, assessment, monitoring, and recommendations to Metro's Strategic Equity Plan, and to guide the Metro Council in ensuring the organization embeds equitable operational practices throughout. Aden Hassan is experienced in conflict resolution, serving as a peer mediator for several years. He's also a mentor for disadvantaged youth in southwest Portland, organizing events to foster a stronger sense of community, promote self-esteem, and forge relationships between the youth. He provides educational and career guidance to high school-age teens, and is devoted to creating support systems to improve achievement and success in higher-level education. Aden believes the PSEP should be focused on developing stronger strategies in conflict resolution regarding individuals with mental health conditions. Moreover, the PSEP should work to enlist mental health experts and develop comprehensive training to heal the relationship between law enforcement and people with mental health conditions. Michelle Lang is the Director of Campus Ministries at Warner Pacific University and serves as a pastor at Amago Day Community Church. She has a long career in urban development and advocacy, specifically in areas related to youth and the African-American community. In 2015, after being shaken by the Michael Brown case in Ferguson, Missouri, Michelle set out to combine her extensive background in theater and community engagement to create an interactive workshop entitled "The Art of Tough Talks," a multimedia project that utilizes the arts to foster conversation, education, and action on matters of social change and justice. Patrick Nolan. Due to untreated mental health issues, Patrick was homeless in Portland off and on from 1990 to 2011. Since then, he has been both a board member and community organizer at Sisters of the Road Cafe, a board member at Empowerment Initiatives, and an advisory council member for the Mental Health Association of Portland. His ongoing interests include public health care, the housing crisis, homelessness, local politics, reading nonfiction books, especially history, and meeting new people. And finally, Zachary Thornhill. Zachary is currently an adjunct professor at Portland State University and a social worker with Multnomah County's Mental Health and Addiction Services Division. He has worked with individuals across the lifespan in areas of public health and social services, and has a special interest in social work practice at the intersection of public safety, aging, and behavioral health. He has previously worked at a variety of community-based mental health agencies and served on the Ambassador Council at Our House of Portland. Now, to those who are present, who I'd like for you to engage directly, I'll invite the first group, and then Mayor, if you could please invite the second, and then the third, and then I'll come back at the end if you have any questions. I'd like to first introduce you all to Sebastian Chevalier, Lakiana Drury, and Kalangi Williams.
Thank you. Welcome, gentlemen, thanks for being here.
Good morning, Mayor. It's good to see you again.
Good morning, Mayor. Thank you for having us. It's our, our turn to speak. So I work with Word is Bond, it's a--
Tell us your name.
Oh, yes, Lakiana Drury, Executive Director of Word is Bond and teacher at Rosemary Anderson High School.
I'm Kalangi Williams, a junior at POIC and a member of Word is Bond.
I'm Sebastian Chevalier. I'm a senior at Lincoln High School and a member of Word is Bond.
We're very excited to be a part of this project. I think it's very important work, and we look forward to engaging the community, and particularly for me, engaging the youth and making sure that their voice is heard in this process.
Yeah, I'm excited to get my hands dirty, make a change, and address all the issues going on as far as institutional racism, and all the issues PSEP is going to be participating in.
Yeah, I, I joined this work simply because I was born and raised in Portland, and I wanted to give back to the community that molded me. And-- And I'm very excited, but I also recognize that it's not going to be easy work, and I'm ready for a tough, bumpy road.
Thank you. And I just want to say to my colleagues, and I've probably said this offhandedly, and I'll say it again here, the youth that applied for the two youth positions were really outstanding. And frankly, they had harder interviews because they didn't know what the questions were going to be. And so I got more of a chance to really understand them personally and what skillsets they bring to the table and what their current perceptions are. And I think the overall committee is going to really benefit from the youth voice, and I appreciate the interest of you two young gentlemen to participate. Lakiana, I think you have demonstrated a significant commitment. Could I ask you just quickly one question?
Yes, sir.
And that is, at the end of the day, when all is said and done, and you've served your time on PSEP, what do you hope to have accomplished?
I guess like the main accomplishment is to change someone's, change somebody's life or their outlook on whatever that may be like, you know, if they're a, I don't know. I mean, this is a very liberal state, and I think everyone should be able to voice their opinion the way they see fit. And I guess that's, I don't know, my main objective and further like build my leadership skills, my work ethic, and my integrity.
Thank you.
I would say at the end of the day, I would want the city of Portland to be an example for the rest of the country in regards to how the community and the police interact with each other. I think that we should be the first step because, you know, Word is Bond started in Portland, and we don't know of any other organizations like ours in any other state. And so this is just a smaller step in a bigger, in a bigger journey. And yeah, that's what I want for Portland to be, the example for the rest of the country.
Thank you. And Lakiana, you have a relationship with both of these gentlemen through Word is Bond, and you're instrumental. Could you tell people maybe watching this a little bit about what is word and bond? What is word is bond?
Yeah, so Word is Bond is a nonprofit that works with young black men in law enforcement to build positive relationships. And really, what we try and do is empower the youth, the young men who are part of this organization, and we call them community ambassadors, to really take the forefront of this issue and lead it in a way where rather than coming from the police to the youth, it's the youth coming to the police and engaging them in meaningful work in a variety of ways, looking at, like Kalangi had said, the structural racism pieces, but also the overall interactions. And we believe in the power of storytelling, that ultimately that's what's going to change perceptions and what's going to change views between the two groups, is when we share stories and find common ground. And that's really what I'm hoping to do out of this process, is to help connect the community and make them feel a part of the process of PSEP. There's a lot of marginalized groups, from folks with mental health to individuals and communities of color that don't feel connected in this process. And if they can feel a part of this at the end of the day, I think then we'll have done our job.
Thanks, Lakiana. Commissioner Udaley?
Yeah, I just wanted to share with you that I spoke to a class of fourth graders last year, and they had a lot of really excellent questions for me. And one of them was, what can kids do to help government? So I tried to conjure up some, you know, useful recommendations. And then the next question was from a young woman who said, building on that last question. Grownups talk about diverse, when grownups talk about diversity, they talk about gender, they talk about race, they talk about disability. I mean, she went down the list, and she said, but they never talk about kids. Why are kids or youth not included in our conversations about diversity? And so I'm really thrilled to see two youth members of this committee, and I would like to see more youth representation throughout all our commissions and committees, because we're stewards of the city for you ultimately, and you have a unique and important perspectives that we may have lost sight of or never experienced or understood. So I'm really grateful that you're spending your free time on something that, you're right, it's not going to be a lot of fun, but it's really important, hard, and hopefully rewarding work you're going to be doing. So congratulations, and thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. We appreciate it. Thank you. And assuming I got the names right here for the second panel, Nick, it's Lakisha Dumas, Bob Di, and Andrew Callic. Is that correct, in the second group? Come on down. Thank you, and welcome. And if you just want to tell us a little bit about yourself and what brought you to the PSEP and what you hope to accomplish, that would be great.
My name is Lakisha Dumas. I have an extensive bio. I thought they were going to read it, so I wouldn't have to go through all that. But a little bit about me, born and raised in Portland, Oregon. I'm a recovering addict, and I suffer from mental health challenges, mental illness. And my commitment to this is, my higher power led me to be at more tables, to be the voice and advocate for change in this community, and to really help with bridging the relationships between police and community. I've been on both sides, and I just, like the young gentleman said, I just want us to be an example of how police and community can work together.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Good morning.
Good morning. I am Robert Di, Bob Di, general manager of Lloyd Center. And I've got a broad resume of working with various police agencies across the country just in my career. But I think what drives me more than anything is I had an older brother who was a product of the prison system and also had mental, excuse me, mental health issues. And he also died very young, at age before, I mean, a day before his 50th birthday. In terms of my, what I'm hoping to see come from my work with the PSEP is really just strengthening, bringing the community together, regardless of what our individual opinions are and our ideological values. I mean, I just, I think that bringing the city together is very, very important. But I wanted to say one thing just very quickly, and that is, I do applaud you, Mr. Mayor, for having this committee. And you and I have communicated previously on some issues of the community that I've been concerned about, and you've been very responsive and helpful in that regard, and I appreciate that.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning, mayor. Good morning, commissioners. My name's Andrew Callic. My folks were public school teachers who were dedicated to public service, put that at the heart of our family life. And the way that's manifested in my career has been seeking justice for all manner of folks in all manner of situations, whether it was representing incarcerated folks in law school, in in-house disciplinary proceedings, or trying to fight for social security benefits or unemployment insurance for people. To my days at the ACLU as an attorney, and then as a criminal justice policy advisor to a New York City public official. So I'm honored to be part of the panel. I'm looking forward to learning an enormous amount from my colleagues on the panel and hopefully pushing for meaningful change here in Portland. So thank you.
Thank you.
Can I have a question? Just was curious, I just got back from a two-day trip to New York City and was catching up on everything that was going on. Which borough president did you serve?
I served the Manhattan Borough President, who was Scott Stringer at the time. He later became the city's comptroller.
You know, I'm struck by the fact that you worked, you know, came out of Harvard Law School, worked for the New York Civil Liberties Union, and then now you're working for Airbnb. How would you describe the arc of your career there?
Yeah, so-
Wordly mobile.
I mentioned my folks earlier, and we had a Sunday routine, which was, we would go to church, and my father would videotape the Sunday morning political shows, and we would come back and have a bagel breakfast and listen to Dad just rant against politicians. And I could have taken that as a sign that he thought politics weren't worth paying attention to, but I did it the other way and believed that he thought that there was little, that was more important for a citizen to be a part of. And so I have always been driven by a desire to be involved in the workings of government. My current job is actually the only private sector job I've ever had, and it's been very interesting to sit on the other side of the table from what I was used to. But I think that this will be yet another unique challenge in my career and one that I'm certainly looking forward to and honored to take part of.
Mr. Di, I just want to say, we have an indirect connection, which is, I know in the work that you're doing to revitalize the Lloyd Mall and to activate the park across the street and to do things, you're working with Dan Beederman and some other people from New York that have done similar work. And I, in a prior life, served on a community board in New York City that had Dan Beederman, both as a board member and then later as a BID chair, and learned a lot from him about how local businesses can chip in to revitalize areas. So good luck in your work.
Thank you. We do, we have a lot invested, invested in Holiday Park, and you have a great Parks Department that has worked together with us on that, and we appreciate that.
Oh, good to know. I'll get a, I'm the new Parks Commissioner, so I'll make sure I get a briefing on what we're doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it very much. And last but not least, our last panel is Sam Sachs. You got to carry the whole table.
Sam, did you bring leftovers from last night?
I did not, no. It's a little awkward, but I kept the whole table to myself. Mayor, members of the Portland City Council, it's an honor to be here today. I'm humbled to be here today as a citizen of Portland, as a community member whose family has been here since the 1940s. Currently, I'm the founder of nonprofit The No Hate Zone, focused on ending hate and racism in our community through education, community engagement, and advocacy. One of the community engagement pieces that we do, some of you know, is we have Breaking Bread breaking barriers once a month, where we bring, specifically focus on communities of color and police together to have dinner and sit down and have conversations. This weekend, we partnered with Word is Bond, which is just an amazing group of young men, and we held the Peace Jam. We had probably 200 community members of color and police officers from Portland Police, the Sheriff's Office, Sheriff Reese was actually there playing basketball, and the Oregon State Police played basketball on the same team, and Word is Bond held a conversation around race and policing. I have worked in parks as a park ranger, worked as a deputy sheriff, I taught equity at the police academy, so I have some history in law enforcement, public safety. I have a degree from Portent City University in Black Studies. So those are some of my qualifications that bring me here today. The reason I'm here, though, is having served as a human rights commissioner and the chair of the community police relations, this issue is near and dear to my heart. This is my community, and I care about the community members, and I care about building relationships with our community, specifically the communities of color and the mental health community and our police. And like Sebastian said, it's our opportunity to serve as an example for the rest of the country, to create the blueprint for how we can bring community members and police officers and public safety together to build better relationships so we have a safer and more vibrant community. So thank you for choosing me, mayor. It's an honor, and I'm humbled to be here.
Thanks. We appreciate it. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Without further ado, I'll entertain a motion.
I move the entire slate.
Second.
Commissioner Fish moves. Commissioner Udaley seconds. Carla, please call the roll.
Saltzman?
Well, it's an outstanding group of individuals, so thank you, mayor and Nicole, for bringing them before us today and providing us with the bios for those members who weren't there. This is a, it sounds like it was a very rigorous process, so you should all be congratulated for occupying the seats you are going to soon occupy with this vote, and thank you for your service. Aye.
Udaley?
I'd like to thank all five members of the selection advisory committee for their work to help design every stage of this process, from application to recruitment to selection. Establishing the PSEP is an important step for the city and our communities, and the quality of applications we've received are a reflection of your great work. In particular, I want to give thanks to my office's representative on the selection advisory committee, Moussa Awal, who has long championed efforts for the Portland Police Bureau to better connect with and serve the Somali community. I also want to thank the mayor's office and Nicole Grant in particular for her work to get us here today. I want to highlight how great it is to see the representation of youth voices on this committee and acknowledge and thank Andrea Marquez, our, Andrea Marquez, our youth programs coordinator in civic life, for her guidance on how to meaningfully recruit and include youth in these types of advisory bodies. And as I said before, I hope to see youth engaged in all of our city advisory bodies. I want to voice one concern, which wasn't addressed during the presentation, and maybe the mayor could shed some light on, which was raised by Mr. Handelman of Portland Cop Watch when this item, well, at some, I can't remember, recently raised by Mr. Handelman, which is the need for a healthy pool of alternates due to the potential of high turnover on PSEP, as we saw with the coab. So I'm just wondering what the plan is for that. Finally, I want, I know that this was a highly competitive process, and more Portlanders wanted to participate and serve than could be included on this committee, so I'm really encouraged to hear that the facilitators are exploring ways to create additional opportunities for engagement, especially through subcommittees. And we're lucky to have such engaged constituents who are willing to share their time, efforts, and expertise, and it's my hope that PSEP will follow through on the promise to engage as many Portlanders as possible in this work. Congratulations. Thank you for your willingness to serve. Aye.
Fish?
So the constant refrain you're going to hear from us today is, thank you for your service, because you're being asked to take on, I think, the hardest assignment that we've made during my tenure on the council. In our last, the last time we took a look at our boards and commissions, I think we determined that we had over 100. But one of the things we also learned was, we didn't have consistent rules, and we didn't do adequate training, and we asked people to take on big assignments without really knowing what their function and role was. So I am really pleased that one of the first orders of business is going to be the training you're going to get, and I heard as part of that training, you're going to get a briefing on your particular function as a public official, and please pay particular attention to that briefing, because it will guide you in terms of all your activities as a member. It'll help you understand what emails you do or don't have to save. It'll save you an enormous headache down the road if you completely understand what your role is and what your obligations are. But I think this has the potential to be the hardest assignment that we've asked any citizen group to take on. It's new, so it's unchartered. It rises from the ashes of a process that failed and left a lot of bad feeling. It addresses one of the two key issues facing our city, which is the housing crisis and public safety, and it is an issue that the mayor actually ran on, staked his merrily on. So you can't get, the stakes can't get any higher than that. And that's why I join with my colleagues in saying how pleased we are with the quality of the people that have agreed to take on this assignment. And while we're not allowed to have favorites, since I have a ninth grader at Lincoln, I just want to say, Sebastian, good for you. I don't know how you're going to be, I don't know how you're going to be a senior in high school and take on this role, but if you can manage it, my guess is you'll be going to the college of your choice. So congratulations. Thanks to everybody that shepherded this process to where we are today, and the council is fully committed to your success. Aye.
Wheeler?
Well, I'd like to thank all of you for being here today and sharing your stories and your perspectives. And like my colleagues, I want to thank you all for volunteering for this very, very important assignment. We already know that the PSEP is a function of the settlement agreement with the federal government, but it's also a testament to the community advocacy and the work done here within the city. And in my mind, PSEP is going to represent so much more in terms of community engagement. When I look at our 13 new members, I'm reminded that the PSEP is fundamentally intended to increase the community's access to government. And I want to just reiterate what Nicole had said during her testimony, there were- There were so many good people who applied for this position, and we did not accept everybody. There were people who, I will tell you, had amazing credentials that still did not make it onto this committee, and so we have been very intentional about creating as many onramps as possible to this process, and I would encourage people, whether you applied previously or did not, take up that charge if you're inspired by this and become engaged. Commissioner Udaley raised a very fair question first asked by Dan Handelman. First of all, let me just say, it is my hope that we will not need to go deep into the alternate pool. We have three facilitators for this process. They have proven to me in a very short period of time that they are exceptional facilitators. They bring different skill sets to the room, and I think collectively, they're going to do an outstanding job. They are already starting out with a comprehensive training and onboarding process for all of our PSEP members, and that's something that the former COAB members had strongly encouraged us to adopt, and so we are adopting that process. That being said, we still do have a pool of alternates, and if we start getting into that pool of alternates, well, then we will obviously have the capacity to expand that as necessary. And I would encourage people, if you don't think your voice is on this committee and you don't think your perspective is being covered, I definitely want to hear from you. I want you to apply for a future iteration of the PSEP. By virtue of its structure, it's intended to be the community's voice in conversations and decisions around police accountability and reform. And of course, when we say "the community," what do we mean? That's a question I get asked a lot. We know that Portland is not monolithic in terms of background, history, traditions, language, ethnicity, race. We also know that it's not possible in a committee of this size to cover all of the bases and ensure that every single perspective is represented on PSEP. However, I am very encouraged by the depth of lived experience and personal experience and professional experience that's being brought to the table by these 13 individuals. As I said, I was floored by my interviews with these 13 PSEP members. They have already, including the youth members, demonstrated a very strong commitment to community engagement and leadership. There is not a person on this committee who is not a leader in and of their own right, and they bring a lot of passion to the table. On sort of a funny side note, I spent a good chunk of my interview time trying to encourage people not to be interested, because I knew the pool was so large, so I was painting all sorts of very difficult scenarios and potential tough points and challenges that might realistically arise. And to a person, they all said, "I know it, and I'm in," because it's that important to me that this be successful. So we have highly committed individuals stepping forward. I want to thank Sebastian and Kalangi in particular. I think it was incredibly important that we have the youth voice represented here, and I hear a lot from young people in this community who say, "It seems like so much of the conversation around policing and police accountability and police reform is taking place around tables full of adults, but the conversation is just as much about us as it is the adults." And so this is a really important opportunity for us to intersect youth leaders with our adult leaders to make sure that youth, you know, issues that are specific to youth are represented at this table. And I will just say, in the conversations, the interviews we had with the youth, their perspectives in many cases were very different than the perspectives of the adults, and I think that in and of itself was an important learning moment for me as the police commissioner and the mayor, and I think it will be an important perspective for the members of the PSEP to hear. Over time, I hope we'll see more of Portland communities represented on this committee, because more voices are always welcome and needed at the table. And finally, it's important that the community hears from those who've been chosen for this work, and that those individuals are ultimately going to be accountable to the entire community, and I stand there with you to be held accountable by the community at the same time. So I want you to know, my support for your efforts will continue to be unwavering. Finally, I want to thank Nicole Grant. Nicole Grant, where did she go?
Here.
There she is. She's hiding over there by the column, as she often does, because she knows I'm going to try to embarrass her. Nicole, you outdid yourself. Thank you. This is great work, great efforts working with our facilitators and the DOJ and our partners in the settlement agreement to get to yes on this important issue. This is a very important milestone for all of us as a community. I vote aye. The report is accepted. Thank you, everyone.
They've requested to do a photo.
Sure. Why don't we just come right down in front?
...since 2017, and pleased to bring forward a package of code changes that will further that good work. The changes before us today represent a handful of common sense measures we can take to support our local industry with a special focus on addressing communities harmed by cannabis prohibition and on our ability to support micro and small businesses. I'll have more to say in my closing, so I'm going to turn it over to staff from the cannabis program, Brandon Goldner and Jeffrey Van Kent. Please come forward, who will walk us through these proposed changes. After they're done, I'll invite our four invited speakers to the testimony table. We have asked our staff to condense the presentation in order to take a vote by or before 11:00 a.m. Welcome. Good morning.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Wheeler, Commissioner Udaley, Commissioner Saltzman, Commissioner Fish, thank you all for your time today. I appreciate it. As you said, in the interest of time, I'll keep my comments brief. Just a brief overview of where our program is now, where it was and where it's going, and then Jeffrey will get into the substantive changes of the ordinance that we have here today. Can you go back one slide, Sharon? So, you know, back in 2015, when the program was established, then Mayor Hales made very clear, "These regulations ought to adapt and change as we learn more." He was absolutely right. So today's changes reflect an important and a needed step, but just one step in that ongoing adaptation and change. I think it's fair to say, there's a lot of uncertainty, both in Portland and Oregon and other states that have regulated cannabis, about what the impacts may be, and I think it's incumbent upon us to constantly be evaluating what we could do to make sure that we're doing as good of a job as we can, especially for small businesses and for those impacted by cannabis prohibition, and that's the intent of the changes today. Next slide. And again, just to reiterate, the work that we have is not done. These changes today will allow us to gather data to make changes moving forward. They're going to allow us to see exactly how many businesses, cannabis businesses in Portland are small businesses, how many owners and staff may be impacted by cannabis prohibition, and will provide relief right now in the short term while positioning ourselves for more changes in the future. You know, I think the goal here was pretty simple. It was to bring forward changes that were needed, but prudent steps to kind of move ourselves in the right direction. The financial impact of these changes, we know that our program could absorb those costs, and just to briefly speak to a couple things, in the future, there will be an independent market study done of Portland's cannabis industry to better calibrate our fee schedule to make sure we're not taking in more money than we need. The public advisory body for cannabis policy here in Portland will restart in 2019, and other things are coming too that we're excited about, but for the changes today, I'm now going to leave it to Jeffrey Van Kent, who will briefly walk you through the specifics of the ordinance that you're considering today. Thank you.
Thank you, Brandon. Again, it's Jeffrey Van Kent, Program Specialist for a Cannabis Program. So recognizing our time limitations today, I was going to get all wonky on you, but I'm not going to do that, so instead, I'm just going to go over the six key amendments that we have, and then after I give those summaries, I'm happy to answer any questions about the specifics of those changes. So the first one here, the licensing fee reductions. This is going to be a fee reduction across the board for all license types to provide some sort of financial relief for the industry, but then we also are providing targeted financial relief specifically to those license types that are associated with smaller businesses and are seen as an entry point for certain businesses in the cannabis industry. The next element of the code change is going to be the deferred payment plan. So recognizing that many of our applicants are paying both state and local licensing fees within weeks, if not days, of one another, we'll be offering an option for licensees to pay for the bulk of their license fees six months after license issuance in order to allow that offsetting of state and local fees. The next key amendment that we are proposing is a social equity program. Now, this is a new program that we're very excited about. It's specifically providing financial assistance to small businesses and those cannabis businesses that are either owned or staffed by individuals with prior cannabis convictions. Those businesses will receive either simply fee reductions for all license types, and additionally, processors and producers will receive reimbursements in the form of a credit towards their license fees for any costs incurred at Bureau of Development Services for early assistance meetings. So these are meetings that help kind of streamline the building permitting processes for these businesses. The next two elements that we have are our permitting requirement changes within our own code and as well as our permitting enforcement procedures. Now, both of these are simply ways of streamlining our licensing process while at the same time making sure that our building permit requirements within our code more closely reflect the higher risk profile of certain process types, specifically extract processors, while also providing some relief in the form of a streamlined process for all of their processors and producers. The permitting enforcement procedures that we've changed are simply to make sure that our applicants that have any sort of compliance issues with building or fire code are actually working with those bureaus rather than working in tangent with civic life so that they can have a more streamlined communication with the expert agencies. And finally, the last element of the code change that we're proposing would be an addition of a micro-tier processor endorsement. Now, what this does is it's mirroring an endorsement that already exists and is available at the state level. The difference is, is that the code change will allow us now to provide this endorsement without requiring applicants to pay for an entirely new license at the local level. So again, mirroring something that's already available at the state for micro-tier producers and making it available here at the local level at no cost to the applicants. And so with that very brief summary, I'm happy to open to any questions about the specifics of any of these and have some slides I can definitely go into if you have any specific questions. Thank you very much.
I'm a little sad that you all don't get to see that entire presentation, because it was quite lovely. Any questions? Thank you, Brandon and Jeffrey. Now I'm going to call up our invited speakers. Jeanette Ward from New Leaf, Adam Smith from Craft Cannabis Alliance, Takara Shaw from Greenhop, and Casey Houlihan from Oregon Cannabis Retailers Association. If you could state your name for the record and try to limit your remarks to about three minutes, since we're trying to get to this vote, we need a quorum of four people here to pass an emergency item. And we're going to lose it at 11. Welcome.
Hi. Thank you. My name is Jeanette Ward, and I am from New Leaf, and I just want to start by saying thank you. So New Leaf is an organization that takes the tax dollars that the city of Portland voted on in November 2016 to fund into the communities most disproportionately impacted by the war on drugs. So we are an organization started because of that. I said I wasn't going to get emotional, but I'm not going to make it. I wrote the language that the city voted on. This is super close to my heart, and I'm so appreciative of the work you guys continue to make here in partnership with the community. So thank you. This amendment clearly I'm in favor of. I'm in favor of these changes. This is a critical second part of that work, so you have to invest the tax dollars back into the communities that were economically disadvantaged. You have to do that as step one. This equity program that helps reduce the licensing fees is step two, because then you have the opportunity for people who are small businesses across the board, but that's always going to be a place where, almost always a place where businesses of color start. They start undercapitalized. They start without the networks and the resources. So when you lower the bar here to make it just more level for everyone, and I mean lower the bar by lowering the financial bar, that's the bar I'm talking about, and then everyone can play, you really are doing the right thing, and this is super thoughtful legislation that is just going to create more innovation from these small businesses. That's where that's going to come from. That's where you're going to see just the real advancements, and I think a cannabis market in Oregon that's going to outpace the others, because it's going to take advantage of that diversity. So I think it's a great start, and I think it's a really comprehensive, thoughtful approach.
Thank you.
Oh, yes. Hi, my name is Takara Shaw. I'm also known as Miss Oregon. I work in the cannabis industry. I actually run my own company called Ambit. I do social communication development for different employers here in Portland, and I'm hired by Greenhop to help train their employees and also doing community engagement. I get three minutes, so I've picked three points that I feel are important for me to address at this time. I also want to say thank you guys for having me here. I know a couple of you a little more in depth, and I really like you guys, and I like what you guys are doing for our community, so good job, guys. These policies are definitely moving us in the right way. The first policy I want to bring up is with Jeffrey and Brandon, one of the policies they were talking about is the fee changes. I just want to emphasize like how important that fee change is. As of right now, I want to put a personal aspect on that. As I said, I'm helping the Greenhop, which is a dispensary here in Portland, a minority-owned business. What we're seeing by these fees cuts, we recently just paid some fees, as you guys know. These fees are so high that we've literally had to stop ordering product, which is going to reduce our customer base and basically can make us look like we're not as, not on the same tier as all the other dispensaries, because we don't have the financial backing as everyone else. These fees across the board are the same, no matter, as of right now, they're the same no matter the financial backing for these dispensaries, so taking a look at this is going to help us. So I just want to say thank you guys for noticing that, because it does hurt everything from employee schedules to ordering products in the store to the lights. So thank you very much for taking notice on that, and I just want to say I'm definitely in favor of that. I also want to say, as we're developing some things on here, something that's important to me, as I've said before, is social communication development. I feel like if we make sure that in these policies, we're also having diversity trainings and communication trainings for the owners, I think that that's going to be really, really important with community engagement and reaching everybody, because the more people of color that we do get involved on these new boards that are coming up and things of that nature, the easier it will be for everyone to know the best ways to reach everyone, because trying to just have one brain or two brains say everything, you know, can be difficult. So actually having people who are engaging in these fields that are of color, being a part of the boards, and having a say-so in the new upcoming policy changes, I think is going to be important for this path. I also want to say, the reason why I think that that's important, I believe that empowering people of color to be a part of the things and changes that's going on with these policies, I think that's going to empower our communities. And we're And when you find that people are feeling empowered and feeling like they are on the same scale as everyone else, you'll see a lot more community engagement benefits where the community is being engaged, as well as lower crime rates. People that are empowered definitely are less likely to commit crimes and do things like that. So I definitely want to say that that's important. And then, last but not least, I would like to say that just keeping on the path of making sure that we're getting people with convictions in their backgrounds, let's make sure we're getting that erased, especially these business owners. Even my own personal experience, I, as of right now, have literally was, I have something in my background over a crumb of marijuana that was found in a purse like 10 years ago, literally the crumb, not a smokeable amount at all, but it is on my background, and I'm a business owner. And as a professional, every time my background's looked up, I don't want anything that's going to, you know, fault by me or make me look less than what I am or what I'm capable of for this city. So even personal recommendations of letting the city know who's being issued the money to erase these things. I understand you guys are making these changes, but really making sure the information's getting put out there to the city of who they can contact to move forward. I think that's going to be a really big step. Mr. Saltzman, are you still with us? Awesome. So yes, I think that that's really important there, because I noticed a lot of stuff is going, but the information on how to receive it, I would like to see that, being able to reach the people on how to get the information so we can keep moving forward.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor Wheeler, Commissioners. My name is Adam Smith. I'm the founder and executive director of the Craft Cannabis Alliance. We are a mission-driven trade association. Our members are cannabis companies that are majority Oregon-owned, that have made a commitment to sustainability, ethical business and employment practices, positive community engagement, and social justice. When Oregon legalized cannabis, we legalized the industry we had. Specifically, the state reached out with a targeted advertising and PR campaign to existing producers and urged them to go legal. Note that the campaign didn't say, "Bring your corporate dollars to Oregon and buy a farm or buy a brand." We understood that Oregon had and has had for generations a local artisan cannabis community serving both medical and recreational markets here, and let's be honest, for export. That existing industry, it is important to know, has long been producing some of the best cannabis and cannabis products found anywhere in the world. And Oregon cannabis already has a global reputation for that. This instinct to legitimize and support an industry deeply engaged in Oregon's culture and economy was a good one, and thousands of Oregon producers did just that. They went legal, investing hundreds of millions of dollars of their own and their friends' and family's money, putting up homes, maxing out credit cards to participate in Oregon's new legal marketplace. And they plugged along. Through multitudinous rules changes and regulatory tweaks, they plugged along as state and local officials did their best, and in some isolated cases, their worst, to navigate the uncharted waters of an industry being brought out into the light of day. And they have plugged along even now as oversupply and crushing, and crashing prices have put those hundreds of millions of local dollars of capital at imminent risk and made grim the calculus for those looking to enter the market. And let me reemphasize that this is not like Nike's local capital that we're talking about or Intel's local capital. These are thousands of growers and producers and small business owners and local investors, and they are, for the most part, all in on this industry. And so what Portland is doing today is visionary, and it represents a lot more than simply lowering fees and easing entry into the legal market. What Portland is doing is recognizing that the history, and if we are smart, the best possible future of the Oregon cannabis industry will be born out of the small and the local, and all of the artisanship and biodiversity and care and dedication and community enrichment that that entails. Because the Oregon cannabis industry at its world-class best reflects the Oregon brand, and that brand, worth tens of billions of dollars worldwide, is the same whether we are talking about beer, or wine, or distilling, or food, or anything else. That Oregon brand is authenticity. It is people with their hands in the dirt, making something they love as well as they possibly can for themselves and their friends, and to share with others who love it too. Today, we are in danger of losing the Oregon cannabis brand, losing ownership of the Oregon cannabis brand. The economic crisis of crashing prices and non-existent margins means that hundreds of businesses that should be viable and thriving are at risk, and others are being forced to sell out for pennies on the dollar to large out-of-state and multinational corporations. And those deep-pocketed foreign corporations are not here expecting to get rich selling cannabis to Oregonians. They're here to capitalize on the eventual export market and ownership of that Oregon brand. So to Portland today, I say yes. Please reduce the cost of setting up and doing business in the city. Please support the efforts of businesses owned by individuals and members of community who have been disproportionately impacted by 80 years of failed prohibition. This is extremely important. But also, I challenge you to look further, as I know you will, and to expand your vision of an industry of, by, and for Oregon, one that claims its place as a global center of world-class cannabis. Portland shines brightest when it's bringing the best of Oregon to the world. So stand up for social consumption so that cannabis lovers everywhere can visit Portland and learn what is so special about Oregon cannabis, and spread our fame and our brand. And stand up for the burgeoning efforts to move towards legal interstate export while there's still a local industry to capitalize and participate in that multi-billion-dollar market. Today, Portland is taking responsibility for leadership in supporting everything that is great, good, and valuable about Oregon cannabis and the potential of this industry. And with your continued leadership, we can have the kind of industry here that Portlanders and Oregonians and cannabis lovers everywhere deserve and can be proud of. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Ms. Casey here?
Yes.
Welcome.
Good morning. My name is Casey Hulahan, and I'm here today on behalf of the Oregon Retailers of Cannabis Association, with which I serve as the executive director. Our association represents over 300 cannabis businesses across the state of Oregon, many of whom are located within the city of Portland and are directly subject to the policies created by the city and the Office of Community and Civic Life. Our members include retailers, producers, wholesalers, processors, and several types of ancillary businesses operating in Oregon's fastest-growing economic sector. I'll keep my comments here brief today since I know we're under a time pressure, but we are here today to express our support for the changes to city code being proposed. This package of proposed changes will go a long way towards establishing a more fair and equitable business environment for folks in the cannabis industry, and it should make it easier and less time-consuming for folks to become licensed and start operating safely. We strongly urge the move by the city to bring the retail license fees in line with the other license types. By reducing the cost associated with getting these businesses online, we lower several of the barriers to entry that prevent smaller businesses from successfully entering and competing in this space. This will help prevent moneyed out-of-state business interests from effectively monopolizing the industry and pushing out the mom-and-pop businesses in the process. Additionally, the creation of the social equity program should help provide meaningful and tangible benefits to the folks who have been most directly harmed by cannabis prohibition. This can help assure that people who've suffered the greatest harm from the criminalization of cannabis are not precluded from participating in and benefiting from the economic growth and limitless opportunities that we see in the cannabis industry today. This is an area where the city of Portland has been an incredible leader, both statewide and nationally, in driving the conversation about how to implement legalization the right way, and not in a way that perpetuates the damage done to historically marginalized communities by our government's war on drugs in the first place. Our state government thus far has lacked the capacity in the legislature to create this type of program aimed at achieving the broader goals of social justice and a more fair and equitable industry. That's why it's so critically important that the city proceed with these changes so we can be a model for other municipalities that follow. I also wanted to say thank you to Commissioner Udaley and the folks in the Office of Community and Civic Life for all of their hard work in the city of Portland's cannabis program, for taking input from stakeholders on these important issues, especially in the course of the last several months. We thank you for your time and your focus on these important issues.
Thank you. And I'm very sorry to rush everyone through their testimony and presentations. Takara, I wanted to address the expungement issue that you brought up. City of Portland funded Metropolitan Public Defender, Defender, not Offender, to do expungements. It's my opinion that the state should be paying for those expungements, and it should happen statewide, and it should happen as soon as possible. I have three very slight amendments to offer, simply to clarify the code language, and these were offered by the Bureau of Development Services in order to just distinguish who's responsible for what. So amendment number one is replace all instances of the word "reductions" with the word "credit." Amendment number two is to replace all instances of the word "reimbursement" with the word "credit." And amendment number three is add language as 2(c) and 3(c) that states, "Requests for credit should be directed to the Office of Community and Civic Life. All such credits will be deducted from the marijuana regulatory license fees."
Is there a second on the technical amendments on the package?
Second. Thank you.
Commissioner Udaley moves the technical amendments. Commissioner Fish seconds them.
I just want to add that we'll need to get the final language to the attorney because we missed a couple instances of the word "reduction," but these are the amendments.
Yeah, the direction's clear. Thank you.
All right. I think it's time for a public testimony.
That ends your presentation. Very good. Public testimony, Carla. How many people have we signed up?
Yes, we have three people signed up.
Very good.
Shadrick J. Wilkins, Charles Bridgecran Johnson, and Leland Berger.
Okay. And I'm going to ask politely that we do two minutes, just because I want to make sure we vote on this and the next item before Commissioner Fish has to move, before we lose our floor.
He doesn't have to be here.
He does. It's an emergency.
Okay. I will tell you why.
I'll be generous.
Two minutes. Mr. Shadrick, I will tell you this. My daughter is a cancer survivor and smokes medical marijuana. In July 18th, I came in there and said, "My daughter faces homelessness. I can do nothing to help her." And I told the mayor about this. I just got an email from the, "I don't pay for the library. I don't know if the city council likes the library. I get free email things at the library through Yahoo. I don't know if the city gives equipment or not funding to the library, but this doesn't cost me anything." I just found out my daughter's on SSI, which means she gets $6,000 a year, right? I cannot help my daughter, even though Commissioner Fish is the only person to know I'm at Yards, which is HUD, because HUD says that marijuana itself has THC. I can smoke in the building, and if I let my daughter stay there two days a week, which I'm allowed to have a guest, right? No woman's going to come in there and say, "Well, I'm a stay seven." Also, I don't want anybody in my apartment running my heater. I have electric blanket, which I talked to the mayor when he was running for mayor. I have electric blanket, right? All right. Well, I heat up a whole room and just, okay, never mind. Anyway, I am subsidized because I'm over 55 and a veteran. That's why I wear this hat. I get $7,000 a year from the government, right? I only pay rent of $1,000, but I wish I was young, but anyway. The real truth is, I won't risk my $7,000 federal, and the federal government does not acknowledge marijuana. It is a drug, even though 10 states do, and I can't even have medical marijuana, although I did not inquire about that. I won't risk it. Another thing, my daughter could smoke in the building, and she likes to smoke it, right? And she could smoke it when I'm not there. I won't get evicted, and I won't risk my $7,000, but she now gets $6,000. Her cancer treatment when she was one, she's now 21, was not done properly. She was cured by chemotherapy. That's all I can say. There are other treatments, and I asked Commissioner Fish, she was cured by chemotherapy. I am not a great fan of radiation therapy. That's why I want to talk, and I'm very happy she's on SSI. She will not starve, and I'll buy her a tent, and she can sleep out here.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Good morning.
My name is Leland Berger. I'm a lawyer. I'm 62 years old. I've been practicing for 35 years, and I've been cannabis law reform advocate for the last 25 years, and I'm undercover today. That's why I'm dressed this way. My law firm, along with the Seoul District, which is the business district where I work, had applied for the grant that the public defender got for the expungements, and I wanted to speak to that. But first, I wanted on page five to speak to the requirement that the fire marshal office have issued the necessary permits for the processing. I know this is an issue at the state level, and that I know that the city's fire marshal appeared at the Rules Advisory Committee, but I don't know that that's been resolved, and I don't know that the thing that you're requiring the fire marshal to do is something the fire marshal can do. Of greater concern to me, because, you know, again, I've been working on these issues. I helped write the medical law. I helped write the adult use law. I lobbied at the legislature each session as a citizen activist. I've appeared here before on various matters. I don't understand an equity program to have to do with prior convictions, particularly when, and I'm not sure if you're aware of this, Commissioner Udaley, but the effect of the cities having said, you know, "We're going to take some of this 3% money, and we're going to spend it on expungements," is that there's an effort in the legislature this upcoming session to do what happened in Seattle this last week, where the mayor, excuse me, the city attorney authorized the dismissal of the last 15 years' worth of marijuana convictions. And I emailed District Attorney Underhill and Chief Criminal Judge Albright, and Chief Criminal Judge Albright wrote back that these kinds of things are under consideration in the legislature. And when Greenhop and Greenleaf speak to communities traditionally harmed by the racist war on drugs, that's the way the equity programs should read. That's the way the equity program reads in the city of Oakland. That's the way that law reads in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. I'm concerned that by tying it to prior convictions, when the legislature is looking at mass expungements, Senator Frederick is introducing legislation on this issue, that we're going to wind up in a situation in six months where we're going to have an equity program that's meaningless and doesn't address these issues. The last thing I wanted to say is I do appreciate, I still think the fees are way too high. I think the city's application process is overregulation. It's unnecessary. I've had clients that have gone to Eugene instead to open businesses because of the, it's not to say it's being administered poorly. I think Mr. Golden is doing an excellent job. I've had terrific conversations with him in his office, but I do think the level of regulation is unnecessary. The fees are too high. I appreciate the reductions. I appreciate the effort to be able to pay it off slowly as lowering the entry point, but I just don't think it's enough. And I don't understand, frankly, Mr. Mayor, I just don't understand why it's an emergency. I mean, in the same way that I don't understand that the appointment of the Supreme Court nominates an emergency.
I can speak to that, but you will pass three minutes.
Let's do that after the public testimony. We'll get to your question. Very good. Good afternoon. Good morning, sorry.
Good morning, Commissioners. Charles Bridgecran Johnson for the record. And I think it's appropriate that you do, go ahead, you know, emergency language is just kind of a formality to give us faster relief, especially, it's actually better on this than most, because these, especially the minority businesses, the businesses employing people with criminal records, we'd like to see them get relief and aid as soon as possible to be able to implement this program. I think in the bigger context of a city that has the Blackmail Achievement Initiative and stuff like that, we just need to make sure that equal time is going in to assisting especially impacted communities to be able to get into real estate and banking and everything else. We don't want to say, oh, because this was a business that thrived in some marginalized communities, we're going to create extra opportunities here. They should be following in the footsteps of the mayor and going to Stanford. And actually, those things can blend. Oregon cannabis is a legal, thriving business, so there will need to be MBAs and professionals, and as the federal government comes to its census, normal financial channels available. But just pass this as an emergency, but also make sure that you're looking at the bigger picture, pushing the state legislature to expunge all past marijuana-related crimes and be able, so that barriers are open, that people go into other fields as well, healthcare, everything. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, my name is Lightning with a super creativity disruptor attack dog. I don't smoke marijuana, and I'll make that very clear right now, but I was one of the individuals fighting for the rights of the cannabis industry to have your permit at the waterfront park to explain your position, and I am in support of legalization of marijuana. I have some issues here. I think every one of up here, sitting up in front of me, is doing nothing but looking at the tax dollars and the fees. Now, you have agreed to reduce the fees. I'm asking for zero fees for the cannabis industry, zero taxation on the cannabis industry. The reason is, we're going to see, we already are seeing a saturated market. The city's position is strictly to make fees and taxes, and their position needs to come back and subsidize this industry, not set up the entrepreneurs for failure, which you know you're doing. You know you're doing, because we're in a saturated market. Subsidize this industry like we do the farmers, like we do the farmers. Zero fees, zero taxes, and maintain the survival of all these people that have put their money in this industry, hoping to live a better life, and you knowing you've allowed it to become saturated, and the big players will come in and buy all these people out, and they don't have a chance to survive. Zero fees, zero taxes. to survive. Zero fees, zero taxes, and protect the interest of these entrepreneurs that have invested in this industry. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, so any further, Commissioner Udaley wanted to comment on.
I will.
I'm leaving. I've got to leave.
Okay.
And furthermore, Mayor, I was going to ask you to suspend the rules and allow me to vote first on each item, because Commissioner Udaley will want to give a closing remarks.
That's fine.
And I don't want to do disrespectful.
Okay.
Okay, so why don't we do that? You can answer the question in the context.
Sure.
Please call the roll on the amendment.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Udaley?
Aye.
Fish?
Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye. Amendment's adopted. Please call the roll with Commissioner Fish first to the main motion.
Fish?
I'm very pleased to support this good work, Commissioner Udaley and your newly branded bureau. Congratulations for your good work. It seems thoughtful. It seems responsive to community concerns, and frankly, that was one of the most powerful panels that I've witnessed in a long time of key stakeholders coming and thanking government for listening and being responsive and accountable. So I think we're on a better path, and I look forward to following your lead. Aye.
Saltzman?
I also appreciate Commissioner Udaley's leadership on this and the Office of Civic Life, too. Aye.
Udaley?
I just want to thank Commissioner Fish for bearing with us. We went quite a bit overtime with this item. First of all, to Mr. Lightning's comments, we can't charge zero fees because we have no way to fund the cannabis office and then no way to serve cannabis businesses. So that's out of the question. As far as why we focused on expungement other than, I guess, other indicators, it's because it's actually a measurable way to address communities who were disproportionately impacted, because we know the law has been, shall we say, unevenly applied to communities of color and in particular, the African-American community. And I don't believe that a change at the state level would prevent us from continuing with this program. If it does, we'll address it when it happens, but I'm, my understanding is individuals receive a certificate of expungement, so they could still demonstrate to us that they had a prior conviction, that they have been impacted for this number of years up until the expungement, and that they do, in fact, still qualify for the program. It is undeniable that we have historically created discriminatory public policy that has disproportionate, seems like not strong enough, a word, impacted communities of color. And as Jeanette spoke to, code changes might sound really boring, but it's a big deal, and I'm really pleased to be able to advance any kind of remedy. This is not enough, and we're not done, but I think it's an important and meaningful step in the right direction. The cannabis industry offers us the opportunity to both support small businesses and restorative justice efforts, which is why this will continue being a priority for the cannabis program moving forward. As our presenters have shared today, there's an incredible opportunity for Portland to work with community partners and the industry to create an ethical and sustainable world-class industry, and I'm really committed to supporting our local businesses. That is a high priority for me as well. In order to ensure this, the cannabis program has a responsibility to constantly evaluate its practices and policies to ensure it is advancing that vision. Our work is not done today, but I hope we've demonstrated our commitment to that vision by ensuring fairness for retailers, by equalizing the cost of their licenses, streamlining our permitting requirements, incentivizing microbusinesses and the utilization of women, minority, and small business contractors, and creating additional relief for small businesses and owners who hire employees with cannabis-related convictions or themselves have such convictions. I look forward to gathering more data in the coming months and working with our many partners to bring additional policies, policy solutions forward. I'm going to thank everyone who's worked with us so far, especially our presenters today. I want to congratulate Jeffrey on his first presentation to council and the successful completion of his first policy assignment as his new, in his new role as program specialist. And of course, I want to thank Brandon Goldner and Winta Johannes from my office for their work to move this forward. And finally, I'll just say, we asked for an emergency clause because voting on this as a non-emergency means that the final vote wouldn't happen until two weeks from now, and during that time, a number of businesses will have to pay these fees and would have to pay thousands of additional dollars. So passing it today means we're bringing immediate relief to those businesses. I obviously vote aye.
I think this is fantastic work, and I share my colleagues' respect for the people who have testified today on the panel. I think it was highly informative. Commissioner Udaley, I want to thank you and your team and all the good folks in the burrows who worked so hard on this and all the people in the community who pulled this together. I am very happy to support this. I vote aye. The ordinance is adopted as amended. Thank you, everyone. Colleagues, now we have some sticky problems, so let's talk logistics for a minute. Somebody has pulled item 1009. Who, may I ask, who pulled that?
Mr. Lightning.
Mr. Lightning pulled it. Unfortunately, we do not have a quorum for an emergency item, so Michelle, it looks like you have a recommendation on this.
We do have staff here to present on the item, to be able to hold the hearing now and then move the vote to next week when you do have quorum for emergency items.
Okay, so you would recommend that we pull the emergency clause off of it?
No, I recommend that we have.
Oh, just continue it.
The hearing and then continue it to next week.
Okay, let's go ahead and do that way, and then Mr. Lightning will have his chance to testify, and I'll have a chance to do that. So let's do 1009.
Okay. Increase contract with Miller Consulting Engineers, Inc. by $250,000 to provide additional on-call engineering consultant services to the spectator venues program.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners, Mayor. Pretty simple. It's a existing contract that the spectator venues program holds with Miller Consulting Engineers, a structural engineering firm here in Portland. We've been using them on various projects over the last year-plus since we awarded them that contract. This is expensive work, and we're engaged currently in a number of different projects with them, and we need to increase the amount of the contract. I would also note that in the time since we awarded the original contract, the dollar limit has been increased on these on-call flexible services contracts that are available, and we probably would have set it at this amount in the beginning if we had had that opportunity at the time.
Thank you.
So if there's specific questions you want to know about the contract, please let me know. Otherwise.
I don't, so why don't we take the testimony from Mr. Lightning, and maybe that'll provoke a question or two. Great, thank you. Was it just Mr. Lightning, Carla?
I didn't have a sign-up sheet.
Very good. Excellent. Welcome.
Yes, my name is Lightning, super creativity disruptor attack dog. The only concern I had on this item and why I pulled this item is that I think we're getting into the mindset of anytime you throw out that term seismic upgrade, it's grab those dollars. Get those consultants out there and grab those dollars, because they're waiting to go your direction. And the reason why I say that is, as you know, the original contract was at $100,000. Then you did an amendment, which you have to do when you're over a certain percentage when you're asking for more. You got another $150,000. That took you up to $250,000 from the original 100, and now you're asking another $250,000. So now we're at $500,000. And a lot of what I saw in this report was, this is really for seismic analysis, to complete projects currently underway, and we're asking for that additional money. So again, I just pulled this item for the public to be aware that when we're starting to hear this seismic upgrade, it better start making you very nervous, and you better start looking at where that money is being spent, and who the consultants are, who the engineers are, and how much they're increasing their original contract amount because of that. So this number jumped out at me. It's a little alarming to me, but again, you're going to vote yes on this. But again, I just wanted to put this on record, put it on the regular agenda for the public to start looking and understand, get nervous. The seismic upgrades is going to cost a tremendous amount of money to the taxpayers, and get ready. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Very good. Call the roll.
It's an emergency. We'll just continue it.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. We wanted to continue it. Thank you, Carla, for, that's what happens when you turn my age, I guess. So we will continue this item two next week. Very good. And then the next item is 1014, and it's my understanding, Michelle, we're going to take the emergency clause off of this. Is that correct? Very good. So why don't you read item 1014?
Authorize charitable organizations eligible to participate in the city's 2019 charitable campaign and authorize exemptions for charities not meeting the 25% overhead cost cap requirement.
Very good. And colleagues, I'd like to move that we remove the emergency clause from this item. We have a motion in a second to remove the item. Could we take, call the roll, please?
Saltzman?
Aye.
Udaley?
Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye. Very good. Welcome. Thanks for being here.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, I'm Carmen Merlo. I'm the Deputy Chief Administrative Officer for the Office of Management and Finance, and I'm here today with the ordinance to authorize participants for the 2019 Citywide Charitable Campaign. The charitable campaign is an annual benefit to raise money for local, national, and international charities by allowing city employees to donate to participating organizations through payroll deductions. This year, the campaign will begin on November 5th and will run through November 30th. We've received 20 applications from organizations wishing to participate this year. Eight of those organizations are city-partnered nonprofits, and 12 are umbrella organizations representing nearly 400 individual charities. After reviewing the applications, the Charitable Campaign Advisory Committee, made up of your appointees, recommended that all 20 organizations be approved to participate in this year's campaign. Forty-seven of the umbrella's individual charities require special exemption, as they currently are ineligible based on the city's 25% overhead cap requirement. Those organizations are listed in the handout that we've provided you. All costs incurred for the charitable campaign are paid for by the participating organizations, and there's no cost to the city for this campaign. Employees that wish to participate can select either a one-time payroll deduction or can contribute each pay period. We expect that donations will begin with the first paycheck in January of 2019, and then for your reference, last year, we had 496 employees that contributed more than $260,000. The Citywide Charitable Campaign represents an important way for city employees to give back to their community, and I'm so pleased to bring this ordinance forward for your approval. I'd like to turn it over now to the campaign coordinator, Janet Storm, who'll give you a little bit more background on the committee's work.
Good morning. My name is Janet Storm. I am with OMF Business Operations, and I'm the Citywide Charitable Campaign Coordinator. I just wanted to take a minute to say thank you to the Charitable Campaign Advisory Committee. They did an amazing job this year. They are Mary Gay Broderick, Trevon Myrie, Pollyann Burge, Betsy Quetuga, and Janine Gates. So they were a pleasure to work with. If the ordinance is ultimately approved, as Carmen said, the 2019 charitable campaign will begin on November 5th and run through November 30th. Eight city-partnered nonprofits and 12 umbrella organizations representing nearly 400 local, national, and international charities have applied for this campaign. The Charitable Campaign Advisory Committee is recommending approval of all eight city-partnered nonprofits and the 12 umbrella organizations. During the application process, the Campaign Advisory Committee and Business Operations conducted a review of the campaign eligibility requirements, and then we did an analysis of each of the more than 400 organizations that applied for participation. The analysis involved checking the licensing status in the state of Oregon, examining each organization's mission, their delivery of services, board membership, nondiscrimination policies, and audited financial statements and IRS 990 forms. As a result of this analysis, we discovered that more than 50 organizations at the time appeared to be ineligible for participation based on the city's 25% overhead cap requirement. What that means is, the overhead includes the charity's administrative expenses, such as office staff and computers and fundraising expenses, and when you measure that against their total revenue, it cannot exceed 25%. We notified the umbrella organizations, and as a result, several charities were able to submit more recent financials, showing that they were, in fact, in compliance. So now, the total number of ineligible organizations as of this moment are the 47 that are listed on the handout. Most of these charities are small organizations. They support the elimination of prejudice and poverty. They provide services for minorities and the underprivileged, support public arts, and work to protect the environment. The committee then deliberated on this issue for more than a month and conducted extensive best practices research. They discovered that the state of Oregon metro and Multinoma County annual charitable campaigns don't contain any such limit on overhead expenditures, and they also learned that the state of Oregon enacted a consumer protection law in 2013 whereby a charity's license in Oregon can be revoked if the three-year average of their overhead expenses exceeds 70%. So that is a statewide protection. The committee then consulted with the Oregon Association of Nonprofits, the Better Business Bureau Wise Giving Alliance, GuideStar, and Charity Navigator. All are of the opinion that using overhead ratios to determine a charity's soundness is a major contributor to what they call the nonprofit starvation cycle, which occurs when organizations attempt to meet donor overhead expectations by underfunding vital infrastructure. And all of them have stated that other factors, such as transparency, government, leadership, and results, offer a more accurate indicator of a nonprofit's health. As a result of what the Campaign Advisory Committee learned from this research, they are of the opinion that the city's 25% overhead cap may not be in line with current best practices, but that it will need more time to, that the committee will need more time to arrive at an appropriate recommendation. So the committee is recommending that the overhead requirement be waived for this year only to allow those 47 organizations to participate, and then the committee will come back and make a more specific recommendation to you in time for the 2020 campaign. So in closing, the Committee and Business Operations would like to thank council for hearing this today and for your consideration, and we'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Very good. Thank you. Commissioner Saltzman?
Yeah, I'm very impressed with the thoroughness of the committee's work. That was very impressive track record, and, but, you know, I am opposed to this because I feel it just goes against the grain of common sense. You work in front of with a problem. My God, 47 organizations have a higher administrative rate than 25%. And, you know, in my world, I would say, "Sorry, you're out of luck." And I think we owe it to our employees, who are taking advantage of this campaign, to give to these charities and probably don't have time to investigate, you know, what the administrative rate is on all these charities. We need to be, you know, that beacon that's looking out for them. And so instead of saying, "Sorry, you're out of luck, those that are over 25%", we're proposing to just waive the administrative limit altogether. So organizations that are spending as much as 50% or 70% on administration can get money from our employees. And sure, some of them are small nonprofits doing good work, but if you're a $100,000 budget and you're spending $50,000 to $70,000 on a staff person, what are you doing in the way of any concrete programming? Chances are, the one person who works for that organization is just fundraising and fundraising and fundraising, and I would really, you know, I hope this committee looks, you know, what is the real work getting done by these organizations, particularly the small ones, where over half or 70% of the money is going for administration? It's just, it's just, you know, and given the committee's extensive work and well-qualified people, I'm just totally baffled that we're seemingly moving backwards on this from what I think most people would say, you know, keep your administrative rates low. And people look at that. I don't care what DOJ says or best practices are of other charities, what they tell you are best practices, because they don't want to be bound by administrative rates. But I will tell you, the consumers... rates, but I will tell you, the consumers, ordinary people, that's a big thing, I mean, you know, watch a TV expose of some charity that's spending 90% on administration, they, they come all the time on TV, so this is what matters, and it's understandable to a layperson, so I'm just, I'm opposed to it, and I'm baffled, and I would point out finally that we ourselves hold ourselves to much lower administrative rates, and we do that to get voter approval of our bonds. The Portland Housing Bond has a 5% administrative rate, the Metro Housing Bond has a 5% administrative rate, Portland Children's Levy has had a 5% administrative rate for 15 years, even the Arts Tax had a 5% administrative rate, and that's, that's going, going away, I'm, I'm convinced, but it's just, you know, we are talking constantly to our voters about keeping administrative expenses low, and then on the other hand, we're turning around and saying to our employees, you know, "Never mind, don't look at that, it's not a best practice," you know, all the other charities are all against it, they say it's not a best practice, but, so, it, it just defies common sense, and that's why I am going to vote against this, and I, and I really, you, you talk about having another year to look at it, to me, this is the first sign of, of administrative cap, it's, it's gone if this ordinance passes, because you'll come back a year from now, you want to solve the problems, you'll have the same dilemmas, and you'll have the same 47 organizations leaning on you, and it's going to basically be a permanent waiver of the administrative cap.
Mayor?
Commissioner Udaley, thank you.
Thank you for your work on this, I want to say that at first glance, I was of similar mind to Commissioner Saltzman, but once I delved into this item with my staff, I realized what the issue is. We are looking at nonprofits as if they all serve the same purpose or function the same way, it's one thing to say to Red Cross, who is gathering money from individuals to give to people in crisis, you need to keep your administrat, administrative costs low. It's another thing to say to an organization such as Oregon Public Broadcasting that you have to spend, you have to limit your administrative costs to 25%. Well, they're not gathering money for the, from the public, saying that they're going to do charitable giving with it, they're gathering money from the public to fund their nonprofit and, and their programming and their organization. There's other organizations that I'm deeply familiar with or previously involved with, Portland Gay Men's Chorus, Q Center, the Street Trust, 350 PDX, Portland Institute for Contemporary Art, Right Around Portland, these are vital, upstanding, professional, well-run organizations, they are not misusing their funds, they're simply not collecting money from one set of people to give it to another, so, it's, it's very understandable to me why we need to make this change, and I guess, the alternative is just, we continue to make special exceptions for charities that our employees want to give money to that don't meet this pretty arbitrary criteria that we've set. So what is the alternative? I'm asking staff.
Well, that's what the committee wants to take some time to decide, there were many ideas that were looked at in their meetings, and they realized that they were running out of time because the campaign is typically in the fall.
Yeah.
So, they did not feel that they had anything that was solid enough to bring to you at that time, but they also wanted to make sure that the, the due diligence that they had done was understood, so, that's why they suggested a waiver for one year, and then coming back and, you know, possibly, you know, I can't put words in their mouths, but perhaps they would come up with another figure that might feel more reasonable.
Or maybe a way to distinguish between different types of organizations, because it's absolutely understandable why some of these organizations would have high overhead costs. It's, it's a performance venue, their biggest cost is going to be that maintaining that venue, and, and also, it's not really fair to compare charitable efforts that are run through the city to these nonprofits, because they're not, we are funding them, I mean, the Children's Levy is funded through a tax, not through someone who's paid to sit in their office and do fundraising, so, they're just, you know, nuances to this conversation that I think are being lost.
And I guess, you know, I would be remiss if I didn't say one option ought to be considered is, you know, we have, how many employees, 600 employees that gave last year?
Low under 500.
500 for, and they raised, and we raised $266,000, I mean, that's for a city that employs 6,000 people, that's not very robust, and I would suggest, you know, we probably take a cut, United Way takes a cut, and then the organization gets something, so, you know, I would suggest maybe one of the options be considered that we, we do away with the employee giving, growing them altogether, and just urge our employees to contact these well-meaning organizations directly and save them money by contributing directly to them, rather than through the city, through United Way, or whatever.
Commissioners Saltzman, if I could, I, I think one of the benefits of this program is the ease with which we enable employees to contribute, so they're not making perhaps a one-time donation which many people might not afford, they're able to do it over the course of the year through payroll deductions, so, I think it would be a huge loss if we took away the program altogether.
Very good, is there public, I'm sorry Commissioner Saltzman?
No, I'm done.
Public testimony, who is signed up?
Three people, Shadrick, or four people, Shadrick J. Wilkins, Wendy Hovey, and Megan Humphries.
Very good, thank you. Name for the record, please, you know the drill.
Mr. Shadrick. Shadrick Wilkins. I wish to announce this, that I consider the, the use of the Temple Beth Israel as a, as a shelter for homeless people as a contribution, a charitable contribution to the city of Portland, of the use of resources. When I was homeless, everybody, every feeding center shut down except in 2011, the community center near Temple Beth Israel, which is ran by the, the synagogue was the first largest synagogue west of the Mississippi, okay? I actually been there, and I had an eighth-grade Jewish teacher named Mrs. Berenstein at Madison High School, and my relatives are all Christian, and when I'm, and I was a veteran, I, my dog tags, I could have said Jewish, but I decided to say Christian in case my mother wanted to know about things, but anyway, the real truth is, because Commissioner Saltzman's openly Jewish, I will announce that I am Jewish, whether the Jewish faith thinks I'm Jewish, okay? And my son one time said, "I'm a Christian, I'm pushing the Christian religion, I'm Jewish." So I will talk if Commissioner Saltzman thinks, who's openly Jewish, that the Jewish opinion is not represented, and it is because I also respect the Commissioner's development of the Arts Tax, which to me is a way to make sure that children are, despite cuts in the K-12 state budget, kids get still exposed to the arts, and can learn to read at least. So that's important, whether they learn any science or not, that's, that's a different opinion, so I am now Jewish, whether the Jewish faith accepts it, and I think that's one of the sad things that Commissioner Saltzman, is he has provided the city council for at least 20 years a Jewish influence. So I'm Jewish, and I will do that because I just heard that, you know, was it this fall, or this last winter, the Temple Beth Israel is a home, allows, how much would it cost the city to put 100 people in a homeless shelter? That is a charitable contribution, how much would it cost for the city of Portland to have a Christmas party and feed homeless people? That is a charitable contribution, with no overhead staff? Okay? I'm Jewish.
Hello, Mayor Wheeler and Commissioners Udaley and Saltzman, my name is Wendy Hovey, Workplace Giving Coordinator at the Regional Arts and Culture Council. As advocates for arts and culture in the Portland metro area, RAC is in full support of waiving the 25% overhead cap that excludes some of our funded groups from representation in the city's charitable campaign. Our funded groups in jeopardy are small to mid-sized organizations, combined, they serve more than 115,000 kids and adults each year through substantial arts education programs, equitable access to arts and culture experiences, and performances and programs that nurture diversity of thought and self-expression. These organizations deserve to be represented in the city's charitable campaign. RAC does not consider overhead percentages as part of our grant-making processes. Commissioner Udaley was correct a moment ago in stating that there are a myriad ways in which nonprofits can legally report their program, administration, and fundraising costs, and every organization does it differently. That makes overhead ratios a poor indicator of an organization's community impact and financial efficiency. Overhead is the lifeblood of nonprofit organizations, encompassing the staff who run the programs, staff training and professional development, strategic planning, evaluation and audits, technology, and fundraising so that they can support and grow the programs and services on behalf of our communities. There are nonprofits across many sectors in the campaign that are affected by this cap. They are organizations working to end environmental degradation, racism, and poverty, they fight for social justice and provide services for our community members who live on the streets, they mentor our youth, strengthen families, and prevent child abuse. The work that our funded and member groups do is more important now than ever, they need our advocacy and support instead of barriers and burden. Thank you to the Campaign Advisory Committee for their thoughtful discussions and recommendation to waive the overhead cap, to Janet Storm, Campaign Coordinator extraordinaire, who has pulled together no small amount of information and kept us informed, and we are grateful to each of you for empowering city employees to connect with and support the causes that are meaningful to them through the charitable campaign. We are proud to be your partners in this work. I hope that you will vote in favor of waiving the 25% administrative fundraising cap for this fall's campaign, and RAC looks forward to further conversations that will lead to changes in the code for future campaigns. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Morning.
Mayor Wheeler, Commissioners, my name is Megan Humphries, and I'm a Director for Earthshare Oregon, which is one of the umbrella organizations in this campaign. We work with more than 100 nonprofits to bring them into annual workplace giving programs like the city of Portland's, and we ensure that the organizations on Earthshare's list represent not only a wide range of environmental and conservation work, but they're, they're also responsible, accountable organizations that make a difference in the lives of Oregonians. These organizations protect our most precious resources, our air, drinkable water, wildlands, farmlands, and the livability, livability in our cities that we're currently enjoying, but they cannot do the sophisticated work that is needed to fill that role, or be good stewards of the funds that are donated to them without so-called overhead, like experienced staff, working computers, financial accounting and auditing services, and a suitable office space. These are things most businesses and government agencies take for granted, but nonprofits are penalized for being professional organizations. And why is that? It's because people have heard in recent years that nonprofit overhead is a monolithically bad thing, and that nonprofits should have little to none of it, but, you know, recent academic research actually refutes this assumption. One university study that was published just this month in the Journal of Nonprofit Management and Leadership found that lower overhead rates do not equate to efficiency. Their analysis of more than 1, 600 Habitat for Humanity affiliates across the country determined that it was actually the exact opposite. The researchers concluded that using low overhead rates to measure efficiency is potentially misleading to donors and thus should be avoided. The myth that low overhead indicates a good nonprofit starves nonprofit organizations of the resources that they need to be effective servants of our communities and effective stewards of our donations. They can't keep track of our donations if hiring a bookkeeper or conducting their annual audit is out of the question because it would increase their overhead ratio. They can't really be effective if they can't hire a qualified executive director. For many local nonprofits, even something as small as buying one laptop computer can push overhead beyond what this particular city code governing the campaign has arbitrarily decided is an unacceptable number. So, I hope that you will all vote in favor of this ordinance today, it would allow important nonprofits providing services that we all count on for the health of our communities to participate in this giving campaign this fall, and thank you so much for providing the employees of the city with this effective and important opportunity to give back to the nonprofits that benefit from it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, my name is Lightning Supercreativity Disruptor Attack Dog, absolutely agree with Commissioner Saltzman. You know, what's interesting to me is we were talking the 25% overhead cost, well, from my position, I guess I would have said, "Well, maybe we can do a little bit better, let's just go 50%," but what you did, you took, you did a complete waiver across the board and said, "Ah, how about 75% like the state, well, why not even higher?" That, that doesn't even make sense when this 25% overhead cost was implemented, and now you just want to completely do away with it. Now, another issue I have is that when we're talking about these nonprofits, who's really doing the detailed research if there's been any complaints filed against them? Let's use an example from someone I have a lot of respect from, Commissioner Smith at Multnomah County, she's made a claim publicly, and it's in print, that Joanne Hardesty embezzled money from the NAACP, now, with that being stated, Mayor, and you being a state treasurer, and knowing a complaint has been filed at this time, do you want your city employees giving money to the NAACP till we have an understanding what has really happened and that investigation is finalized, or would you put them in jeopardy as the mayor of this city where their money might not even go to anything, it might disappear? Would you do that without at least sending them a disclaimer out first and saying, "Due to the information I've received from Pamplin Media, from various other media newspaper outlets, I have a concern, and I'm going to address that, here's a disclaimer, make sure you understand I've done a disclaimer." Now, from Commissioner Saltzman's position, get out of this, don't do it anymore, city, there's too many issues, and it's right in the publication from Tuesday, that if you can't read this, and at the city club this Friday, you're going to hear about this over and over from the public on this issue. Do you want the city employees taking a chance with their money when this is in publication? If I was the mayor, I would say no. I would not even have this within the city, push it off to the side. The employees are very intelligent people here, I have the greatest respect for you, even though I want to put a freeze on your salaries, and I know they have the ability to make the right decision where they want their money to go, and they don't need the city of Portland involved in this in any way. As Commissioner Saltzman stated, get the city out, look at this issue between Commissioner Smith and Joanne Hardesty, get the city out of this mess. Thank you.
Thank you, thanks all three of you.
We have two more, Teri Thezen and Diana O'Gaz.
Welcome, thanks for being here. Would you like to start, please? Thank you.
Good morning, on behalf of the All Hands Raised Partnership, I want to thank Mayor Wheeler and the city Commissioners here today for the opportunity to speak with you. My name is Teri Tyson, and I am the Vice President for Strategic Planning for All Hands Raised. I'm also the parent of two PPS students, one a graduate and one a current student. The All Hands Raised Partnership has been fortunate to be included in the city of Portland's employee giving campaign since 1999. During that time, city employees have contributed nearly $292,000 to the school districts in the city of Portland and the schools. When we were first invited to participate in the campaign, we were known as the Portland Schools Foundation, and it, which included all of the schools in the Portland Public School District. As of 2011, the leadership of, under the leadership of then Multnomah County Commissioner-Chair Ted Wheeler, we expanded our mission to include all public school districts in Portland, that includes Centennial, David Douglas, Park Rose, Reynolds, Gresham Barlow, and the Multnomah Education Service District. This has become increasingly relevant as our central focus is to improve outcomes for kids of color and kids in poverty, 75% of which live in districts east of Portland. for kids of color and kids in poverty, 75% of which live in districts east of Portland Public Schools. The Workplace Giving Campaign is significant and impactful. Not only does it provide resource for schools and students, but equally importantly, it gives us an opportunity to talk to city employees about the work we are doing at All Hands Raised Partnership, which focuses on equity to improve academic outcomes and lead to economic mobility in our city. On behalf of the All Hands Raised Partnership, I want to thank you. I want to thank the employees of the City of Portland and Janet Storm and her team for their focus and effort that you have put on giving back to this community and supporting your nonprofit partners in making Portland a city where community health and well-being is a clear priority. Thanks for having me today.
Thank you.
Hello, good morning. My name is Diana, and I am very fascinated by this specific topic. Our city has a lot of wonderful nonprofit organizations that are helping our citizens really thrive. And I think that, you know, when we have the 2019 charitable campaign, that's a huge benefit because we are encouraging our fellow communities to give back and to help each other out. Helping each other out is what makes us a strong, strong community where we come from very different backgrounds, and it's our diversity that unites us. There are 47 nonprofits that didn't make the cut, and although I do wish that all nonprofits could make the cut because I think that it's absolutely important, I think that it is very important to maintain the integrity for the people who are going to expensing their own finances out of their paycheck. When you have people who, you know, work really, really hard, it's difficult to draw that line on where the cap is. For me, myself, I am currently trying to create a nonprofit website. I've missed that cap this year, but that just gives me hope for next year to really get my ducks in a row, to learn what it is that I need to do in order to qualify and hopefully be one of the 25 next year. I agree with Commissioner Yu Daily in the fact that maybe, you know, we create a special bracket so those people who didn't make it into the top 25 have the opportunity to continue to promote something that is going to help enrich our community. But it is imperative for anyone who is expensing their money to know exactly where it's going and to also know what they're paying for. Because there is, I mean, the fact that 25 people did make it, that's showing that they're doing the things that they need to do, and it's not a fault on the 47 that didn't make it. It just means that we need to tighten it up. And if we could create a special bracket so employees know that these 47 charitable communities right here, nonprofits, if they are wanting to expense their money, they at least know what they're giving it to so that everyone has an option. Because to falsely say that someone maintained the cap when they didn't is going to create a problem for next year and for people who are trying to do the right thing. It's very discouraging to see that get pushed forward.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Does that conclude testimony?
That's all who signed up, yes.
Very good. And just, so, could I get Carmen, maybe, or some, either of you, sorry. You probably both have the answer. So, the question here, this isn't public resources, this is the employees' own funds, and we are creating a platform, as we have for a gazillion years, for them to make a holiday contribution to a nonprofit organization of their choice. And as I understand the current context, we are obviously seeking to eliminate the cap on administrative overhead.
For one year.
For one year, which would bring us into alignment with other jurisdictions that do not have this cap. I agree that this will create attention on the question of administrative overhead. And during this time of year, there are always lots and lots of news stories about administrative overhead. Is there a way through this campaign, and my view on this is, I'm honestly, you know, of the opinion that we are providing the platform and our employees, and I would admonish them, to do their research before they make a charitable contribution to any organization. And I would repeat that as often as people want me to repeat that. You should not willy-nilly give money to anybody just because you've heard the name before or you know what they've done in the past. You should do your homework, do a Google search, be thorough about where you choose to put your very precious philanthropic dollars. Is there a way through our campaign that we could list some of the basic information, the name of the organization, what the organization says their mission is, based on their own words and their own disclosure of what their overhead is, and then let our employees decide? Is there a way to do that?
Absolutely.
That's a great idea, and I guess I would carry it a little bit further. And I would suggest we amend this ordinance to require that, but every nonprofit has to file with the Department of Justice. It's a Form 99 or something like, 990?
It's a CT-10, I think.
Yeah. Every nonprofit in the state must file that form, and they do an administrative rate as the rules Department of Justice provides. Why don't we require, or why don't we just list the administrative rate per the Form 990 or whatever it is on the enrollment? And let our employees make their own decisions accordingly. So I think it's just, I think the mayor's idea is great, and I would propose that as an amendment.
I'll second it. You know, my view is let's not exclude organizations from this list. Let's give our employees that information, transparency. Let them make the calls, let them do the Google search, let them answer the questions they want answered. I don't see how anybody could object to that. Commissioner Yu Daily?
What information would this provide to the public that's not already available to them?
Well, I'm proposing, well. Well, I'll give my perspective, and then you can give your perspec-- all of this information is already readily available to anybody who chooses to look. And as Commissioner Salzman just said, there are required state filings, and I think at some percentage, you actually lose your ability to file at the state. I want to say it's like 70%? Okay, great. I don't want to speak on that point. You know, this is a question that is regularly raised, and I think it would actually engender some good conversations between potential donors and the organizations if they say, hey, you know, you appear to be on the higher side. Why are you on the higher side? Let them have that conversation. If, from my perspective, since we're not using city funds, this is actually employees making their own decisions about their own funds, I would go one of two ways on this. I'd either say, let's just put the information out there and let them decide, or let's put no information. And just tell them, you know--
To your own research.
Caveatanteur. You're on your own. In this case, I think it's a legitimate point of discussion for nonprofits. I know that when I make a contribution, I always am curious to know, where is the money actually going? And how is it being spent? And I contribute to organizations that give considerably, that have overhead that is considerably higher than 25%, but I know why it's higher than 25%.
So our state limit, if I'm understanding this correctly, is 70%. So there are safeguards at the state level, and I'm expecting we have some guarantee that all of the organizations who participate are in compliance with all state and federal requirements.
Yes, I checked. They have current licenses with the state.
So are we just, we're effectively raising our cap from 25 to 70% by doing this? Because anyone over 70% wouldn't qualify at the state level.
What I think the mayor and I are proposing is that we simply make the information available to our employees, like a link.
Yep.
You have the name of the organization, Earth Share, whatever it is. Here's a link to the Form 990 for their, to see what they told the Department of Justice their administrative rate is for that year. It could be a link or it could be in print. I know most people do this online now.
Yeah, it's online, correct.
Yeah, but I think we should put a link right near the charity's name to the Form 990 at the Department of Justice, or publish the rate, you know.
Which is effectively raising the limit to 70. Am I missing something?
No, we're just providing the information.
I actually, I'll take that as a friendly amendment because I actually like just linking to the form, then everybody has the same platform, same information. That's, so I'll accept that as a friendly amendment to the amendment. Can I call the roll on the amendment? Commissioner Yu Daily, do you have more questions on that point?
No.
Okay, great.
Salzman?
Aye.
Yu Daily?
Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye, the amendment's adopted. Any further discussion on any of this?
Thank you very much.
Further questions? Thank you.
Wait, the amendment to the item, but then the item has to come back?
Two weeks, correct.
Yeah, it's a non-emergency now. So, wait, don't go so fast. This is a really important program, and as mayor, I want to do everything I can to help support it. I'm a little disappointed with the number, Dan, just throughout, that a very small percentage of our employees participate, and maybe--
We're going big this year, Mayor.
Yeah, well, maybe there's some value added to be had here.
But don't assume they don't give outside the program, that's--
Yeah, I mean, so let's work together and see what we can do. You've done fantastic work on this. I am grateful as an employee of the city to have this option, and I appreciate all the good work that you guys have put into this. So without further ado, this is a first reading of a non-emergency ordinance. It moves to second reading as amended.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, we're going to fly through some stuff here, folks. Item 1013.
Authorized sale of usable surplus mobile data computers pursuant to City Code 5.36 for approximately $12,250.
Due to concerns about the time in the quorum, I'm limiting public testimony to two minutes, and I will be absolutely ruthless about two minutes. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, commissioners. The item before you is to dispose of usable surplus equipment pursuant to City Code. You may recall that the Police Bureau is replacing all of the mobile data computers that are in its patrol vehicles and several of its, or a number of its non-p patrol vehicles. As a part of this, this particular set of materials, which are cards which allow two-factor authentication of users, becomes obsolete. The units that have been selected that are currently being rolled out to vehicles has this as a native part of its technology. So what we've done is we've worked with the vendor and looked at what the appreciable value is. Bureau of Technology Services has worked on this. And the most economic and ecologically sound way to dispose of these is to sell them back to the provider of the equipment, which is Posh. So the motion before you is to authorize the disposal of this surplus equipment according to City Code.
Great. Any public testimony?
Just one person, Shedrick J. Wilkins.
Come on up.
I strongly disagree with that statement. I don't think you should sell it. I think you should give it to the library, give it to this new shelter, the Pearl District Shelter, so that homeless people can have access to the internet or whatever, if it's capable of doing that. Number two is, I want to tell you, I made a derogatory statement against X-ray therapy in favor of chemotherapy. At the St. Jude's Children Hospital, they're experimenting with proton beam therapy. The St. Jude's Children Hospital in Tennessee does not charge money for treatment, and they have this advanced proton beam--
Thank you for that clarification. Let's stick to the contract here. Thank you.
I'm saying that with this, I actually do not pay for the internet, and I could walk into any shelter and access this information about the St. Jude's Children Hospital. Won't cost me anything.
Thank you.
Okay, therefore, we do not have proton beam therapy in this state. You have to go to Seattle or San Diego, and it is basically being experimented for free on children, and maybe cancer therapy children should be sent here. I've suggested this to Jefferson Smith. We should bus people who can't pay for cancer therapy to St. Jude's so they can be, have access. It's specially effective with children with brain tumors because it's focused on the tumor and not the rest of the brain.
Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners. Good afternoon, Charles Bridge Crane Johnson. I think, I wish I had time to delve into this more. You know, the city has a longstanding partnership with FreeGeek. In previous times, we've had the Mount Hood Cable Regulatory Commission come here and talk about the digital divide and internet access. In the public comments, we haven't actually talked about the specific dollar amount. How much money does the city recoup into the general fund or into the police budget by selling these computers back to their manufacturer? So it's very hard to give fully informed public testimony without that data in front of us to know whether that money is the best public expenditure. Would it be better to donate these computers to the Multnomah County Library System, to Portland Public Schools, to FreeGeek, to create a new pilot program with the Mount Hood Cable Regulatory Commission? So I'm not sure that, you know, you have more data in your packets and stuff like that, but, and of course, there's probably a time-sensitive issue about will the purchaser buy, pay less next month? But I think that the package you have in front of you, if you're tempted to vote no on it, there's strong reasons for voting no because you haven't balanced your fiduciary duty with your community interest duty to reduce the digital divide for so many people in our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I don't know if you wanted to respond to that or not.
Just with respect to one aspect, the units that are being disposed of are an additional piece of hardware that is attached to the computer. The computers themselves are not part of this. It's simply a separate card which is installed, which allows two-factor authentication in the current set of MDCs, which did not have that as a native capability.
So what does it actually look like?
This is Chad Loveland, BTS. I can answer that. So it's just a little square about that.
Is this it?
Yep, that's it.
I wish I could blow this up so people could see what this-- This is not a computer. It is not a screen.
That's right.
It looks like a chip reader.
That's all it is.
A card reader.
Yeah, it serves two purposes, as Mr. Doug Easy said. First is our two-factor authentication, which we're required to do by the FBI and the state through CGIS regulations. The other thing that it provides is an automated way for officers to scan driver's licenses, and that to be added to CAD calls or their reporting.
Okay, good.
We have both of those embedded in the new technology, therefore, we don't need any going forward.
Great. Any further questions? This is the first reading of a non-emergency ordinance. It moves to second reading. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Next up, item 1015.
Vacate Northwest Terminal Street between Northwest 17th Avenue and Northwest Upsher Street, subject to certain conditions and reservations.
Commissioner Yu Daily?
Oh, boy.
And all we have after this, just so everybody knows, we just have one more second reading after this.
So we're moving the other emergencies to next week? Is that 1011 and 1012?
We've already taken care of everything else.
Oh, sorry, that's consent. I see. All right. Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to introduce Lance Lindahl, a Right-of-Way Agent with PBOT, who is here to explain the street vacation request. Thank you for being here, Lance.
Thank you, Commissioner Yu Daily. Again, my name's Lance Lindahl, PBOT Right-of-Way Acquisition. Before you today is a request to vacate Northwest Terminal Street between Northwest 17th Avenue and Northwest Upsher. The street vacation was petitioned by a private property owner, Park Office LLC, back in the fall of 2015 in order to support development of a multi-story commercial building known as Field Office. The area being vacated is a 30-foot-wide platted street that runs parallel to the mainline tracks of the Burlington Northern Santa Fe Railroad. Prior to recent development activity, the street was unpaved and was not open to vehicle traffic. Since November 2015, PBOT has leased this area to Park Office LLC for construction staging. With construction now complete, the vacation area has been improved with privately maintained walkways, landscaping, and stormwater infiltration facilities. This same property owner has contributed approximately $700,000 to construct public sidewalks along adjacent portions of both Northwest Front Avenue and Northwest 17th. They're also contributing approximately $1.1 million to the Northwest Front Avenue, a local improvement district that was approved by city council in January of last year. And I was just informed by Jonathan Ledesma, who's a representative of the applicant, that they have completed installation of a new Bike Town station adjacent to the vacation area, and they picked up the tab for that as well. That was $35,000 for that. Del ID Project, that was approved by city council, is going to add bike lanes to better connect this project area to Old Town. So it will construct bike lanes between Northwest 9th and Northwest 17th Avenue on front. The Planning and Sustainability Commission reviewed and recommended approval of this vacation back on May 8th of this year, and as a condition of approval for the vacation, an easement will be granted to the Bureau of Environmental Services for continued operation of the West Side Big Pipe. In this easement area, it's just a small portion of the vacation. It's just a small portion of the vacation area, and it's at the southern tip of that area. If you have any questions, let me know.
That's good.
Sounds great.
Any public testimony on this item?
No one signed up.
Very good. This is a first reading of a non-emergency ordinance. It moves to second reading.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for your patience. Last but not least, a second reading, item 1016.
Authorize the Bureau of Transportation to acquire certain permanent and temporary property rights necessary for construction of the Northeast 148th Avenue, Northeast Gleason Street to Northeast Halsey Street project through the exercise of the city's eminent domain authority.
This is a second reading, meaning that there has already been a staff presentation and public testimony on this item. Colleagues, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Saltzman?
Aye.
Yu Daily?
Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye. The ordinance is adopted. Thank you, we are adjourned.[1773.28]